Order here on Thursday, September 8th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
When you want the motion?
After the minutes. Fire evacuation for everyone. The doors are right behind you, going out here and also down here and then down the stairs and out the back. And please, if there is an emergency, walk away as far as you can from the building as possible. Secretary, please call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Louis Fiore.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella is here. Francis Alimo is absent. Kieran Majmudar.
Here.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Here.
Vinnie Guerillo, absent. Christian D. Antonio.
Here.
And Nicholas Lefakis is absent.
Seeing that Commissioner Alimo is not here tonight, alternate Christian Antonio is his month, September, so he'll be sitting in as a full-time member tonight for all the cases. Make a motion to approve the minutes of the July 28th meeting.
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Higley, seconded by Commissioner DeGray to accept the minutes of July 28th. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Commissioner DeGray?
Just one spelling correction on page two, Director of Planning report. Ms. Witten notified the commissioners at the end of the "ye," should be here. That's it.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or concerns? Is there a motion to accept the minutes as amended to replace the "ye" with "year"?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Higley, seconded by Commissioner DeGray to amend the minutes to replace the word "ye" with "year." All those in favor of accepting the minutes with that amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
But the record show that it was unanimous, accepting the minutes with that change.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to move new business item SPR 1901-160, Spring Street, up to below bond release.
Right after bond release?
Right after bond release.
Is a motion made to move SPR 1901 to be right after, on our agenda, after bond release? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Holinsky. Any discussion? Seeing that all those in favor of adjusting our agenda, thank you. We will do that. We have the town attorney's report, probably really nothing to discuss. You all got the minor changes to that that came in front of us. Now we'll get to the public participation part. At this point in the meeting, the planning is only, Commissioner welcomes comments, concerns, and opinions relating to planning and zoning and infill from anyone who was present, provided that no one may discuss any matter of business at this time that is already elsewhere on the agenda, any matter that is part of an open public hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may be pending. That also includes any matter that's in legal pending status. Seeing that, is anyone would like to come in front of the commission to talk about something other than those items that I already mentioned? Would anyone like to come in front of the commission to talk about anyone, those items that I already mentioned? Seeing them, we'll close public participation. Moving on to item seven, bond release. Secretary, just brief us what that is, the motion to approve, or the staff just wanted to get right into that one?
The zoning enforcement officer went out and did an inspection. This is the learning experience over at 11 Shaker Road, under PH number 3007. The owner is seeking their ENS control bond in the amount of $8,000 to be released. The landscaping bond will remain in effect for a year, as usual. So the motion would just be to approve the $8,000 erosion and sedimentation control for release.
And I see that our zoning enforcement officer has recommended to us that we do release that bond at this point in time. And this is a property that, to me, is right across from Walgreens, in a way.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Is there any questions for staff on this?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all right. Yeah, I knew what you meant. Any questions for staff on this?
Nope.
Seeing now, is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Infill Planning and Zoning Commission hereby approves the release of the erosion and sedimentation control bond in the amount of $8,000 for project PH number 3007, located at 11 Shaker Road, Enfield, Connecticut, Winston Properties LLC. Eric Spongen, owner, I guess, applicant.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Secretary Petronella, seconded by Commissioner Holinsky, to approve the bond release. Is there any discussion? Seeing now, Secretary, call the roll, please.
Okay. Louis Fiore.
Four.
Linda DeGray.
Four.
Virginia Higley.
Four.
Kieran Majmudar.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Four.
Christian D. Antonio.
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
But the record shows unanimous, seven, nothing to approve that bond release. Thank you. Based on the change in our agenda, we're now going to move on to SPR 1901, site plan review for 160 Spring Street. I'll just read this one, John, unless you want to. Applicant for demolition of two small warehouses and construction of a new building, Andrew Crane, applicant Kelly for that lumber, owner MAP 21, Lot 2, I-1 Zone. Would the applicant or the representative care to come forward? Please identify yourself for the record. Can I just make sure the mic is turned on? Red's on. And pull it close to you if possible? Yeah. I know the court's kind of short. I'll move up. My name's Andrew Crane. I'm representing, I'm the contractor, but I'm also authorized to represent Kelly for that lumber. We are planning on, well, I'm sure you guys know, we're planning on knocking down two small warehouses, building one slightly larger by right in the zoning. So, thank you for having me.
Problem.
Thank you for moving me up in the agenda.
No problem.
I'm under no illusions that this is not a very popular warehouse, that all. So, this is a similar presentation that I gave to the ZBA, minus a couple slides. But essentially, the project narrative is, we're looking to demo two small warehouses which are very dilapidated. You'll see some pictures in a few minutes. And overgrown, not very efficient, and build one slightly larger warehouse to replace the two, making it, removing the two buildings that are existing non-conforming, making it a little less non-conforming, moving away from the property line a little bit, and increase the traffic pattern inside Kelly for that. No more trucks, no less trucks, same amount of trucks. It'll be nicer from the street, things like that. So, as you can see in the top right picture, that overgrowth with the red warehouse and the, oh, you guys can see here. I'm like, oh, they're not even looking. Yeah. And the lean, kind of lean to with the white stripe on the top. And in the, in the back of the picture, also that red, small red building. Those two, those come down, you know, as part of the package. You know, clean up the site in the front, upgrade the fencing, things like that, on Spring Street only. Bottom left-hand picture, there's an existing, very large building in the center of the screen. That building stays. This building is to the, all the way to the left on the tree line, up against the highway. And it doesn't reach the back, the red building in the back. It does not, it's not that big. It's almost identical size to the building on the right. So, I mean, any questions, or? Pretty basic, right? This is a kind of graphical representation of the site now. That red bar on the bottom, I don't know if you can see that, that's an emergency exit only. So there are no trucks to enter and exit there. They come all the way from Prospect Street, all the way behind the railroad and enter. And that will be, that will continue to be the case. This is a, this is a site plan that, you know, kind of shows what we got going on there. This is the building. So from, from Spring Street would be the upper left-hand corner. It's no, no windows, no doors there, same with the highway side. And the side facing the other building is the top right-hand corner, one overhead door, and just a small row of windows on top. All block, nothing, nothing too special, but certainly a lot more aesthetically pleasing than what's there now. This is a graphical representation of when we're complete. Again, you'll see that red block, emergency access only. There is enough room to reach the buildings. We had extensive conversations with the fire department. Their hoses reach all the way around the building. We were able to confirm that. We're under the 150-foot mark where we would need fire lanes and stuff like that. The building's only 144 feet long. So, that being said, it will create a lot easier access and move the truck traffic toward the rear of the property, toward the highway and the water, away from the residences, which are across Spring Street. Thank you. So, I'm assuming that you guys have had the staff report comments for a week or so, right? And, you know, I don't really have any other comments. The only kind of hang-up is a, kind of in the center, I don't know if, can you guys see the, can you guys see the cursor on the screen there? Okay. In this neighborhood here, right at the point of it, is an old monitoring well. It was in leftover point from a long time ago. We are working with the health department to determine what it is. It's certainly not a water well. It's some, it's a monitoring well from a tank that was taken out 20-something years ago. So we will confirm that. That's, I understand that's going to be a condition of approval. Totally fine with that. The only other condition, or the only other kind of hang-up is, there's a lot of, there's an easement, and I'm glad you guys can see my cursor here. So there's an easement across the back of the property. It's very wide, it has a 30-inch main. It's a massive sewer main, right? But it's, it's along the train tracks. It's 300 feet from where we're working. The only other sewer line that we have on the property services a bathroom in this building. We have no bathrooms. And we were able to secure a waiver through the building department. You know, we don't need bathrooms in that building at all. So the sewer line goes back here, hits a manhole, which has been since paved over. I don't know when it was paved over, but part of the deal, there are notes on the, on the newer site plan that says, we have to determine, you know, bring it up to grade and unpave over it. And this line goes backwards towards the sewer line, and it stops. The reason it stops, and I know that there's comments in here about, you know, whether it's a cesspool or whatever, is most certainly not a cesspool. So the only way to verify that, and the only reason that Matt and I haven't had a conversation about this, I just found this out a couple days ago, is we have to uncover that in order to, and track it underground, right? And find out how it ties into that line, which we are willing to do. It's not, we're not ducking responsibility or anything like that. I just want to be clear that we are in no way going to touch it. We're coming nowhere near it. The project doesn't affect it, other than making sure that that manhole is accessible in the future for somebody else's project, or whatever. So. So if I, if I may intercede, in order to be planning on putting a robot camera down through that, see where that goes? Yes. Yep. Like someone like a Fletcher Sewer and Drain or something like that will come. And the reason why we haven't done that already is, I was planning on going for a waiver to, to just, you know, not have to put all the information on the plans because it's expensive and things like that. And then as of, I don't know, 10 days ago, or something like that, you know, we had more conversations with the town engineer and the planning department, and they really want to see the information on there. Happy to do that. Not a big deal. The only thing that I would ask is that, we're getting very close to the point, this is a masonry building, we're getting very close to the point up against the weather. And getting that information may be a timely process. It might take a few weeks. And if we were to take a few weeks here, we, we won't make the winter deadline by that time. And. Not our problem. I, I'm happy to make it a condition of approval. It's not a problem, but I would ask that, you know, we approve it moving forward. So, if I may, I know Commissioner DeGray has something to say. So basically, at this point, you are not asking for the waiver?
No.
We're not asking for the waiver because the town engineer and the health department and the planning department are not going to support it. That's the only reason I'm not asking for it. Okay. Commissioner DeGray?
Through the chair, to the town. Where are all the plans for this? I mean, we only have this one full-size sheet. The rest of the sheets are eight and a half by 14. I can't see that small. And I don't see any lighting information, or any, if it is on these sheets, I can't read it. And I, I mean, it's supposed to be a complete set of plans, and I don't feel this is complete.
Couple of, couple of pieces in there. The lighting is shown on the architectural plans. I think the only lighting that is proposed is some building-mounted lighting. The scale of the plans is difficult. I absolutely agree. It is difficult to see those details at that scale. But it's my understanding, the only lighting that's proposed is some building-mounted, basically security kind of.
Yeah, they're required by, they're required by building code. They're wall packs over the doors and stuff like. There is no sight lighting included at all. We were able to, and the reason why there's not more sheets is, a lot of the sheets that would normally be included are things that we got waivers for at the ZBA, like landscaping and things like that. Parking lot design.
That's ZBA. That has nothing to do with us. We require a full set of plans, and that's part of the, the site plan review. And without them, we can't really review the site plan. And, I mean, I see that you gave me these little sheets.
I didn't.
Or, I don't know if staff gave, but.
It's a, it's a one-page site plan. It's, it's really only the, the foundation. There's no other utilities. That's not sufficient.
No, it's not. I should have a complete set of plans. You're saying that all I'm doing is a concrete slab?
Yep. The grading, the grading's on there.
It, there's nothing really here that I can see. I, again, there's no real.
What information would you be looking for that's not on that?
Well, we ask for a full plan of the lighting, and though it's on here, it should be a separate sheet. We ask for landscaping.
But there's no, there's no sight lighting at all?
There's no lighting on this building?
On the, yeah, on the, on the building.
And we need to know if it goes off of the site, because you can't have light leaving the property. This is not sufficient, is what I'm telling you, sir.
Okay.
And what I do have, even with a magnifying glass, I can't really read. So.
Okay. We can blow it up in sections, I suppose, but then we wouldn't show the back half of the property in which, that's apparently the largest sticking point is.
And that's another, yes, and that's another part that we have to know about.
Oh, yeah. And I'm, I'm not, I'm willing to, to provide that information.
That's what we do need.
Ahead of, ahead of time, even though it has nothing to do with the project? Absolutely.
Yes. It's part of our application process, and I don't know why we don't have it. And I understand your situation.
Right, right.
You're trying to tell me.
I was told to go for a waiver a month ago, and then two weeks ago, was told not to, because no one's going to support it. That's the reason that's not on there.
But, our regulation to ask for a complete site plan.
If I can kind of clarify a couple of things, because I don't know that we want to spend a lot of time on this, but there's a provision in the regulations that to allow people to ask for a waiver. So they have the right to ask for the waiver. The simple fact that you ask for a waiver doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be approved, just to be supported.
That's true.
So when you request a waiver, that information is reviewed by the relevant agencies and staff, and then you get their feedback. And in this particular situation, for instance, with respect to the utility information, we did provide information to the surveyor for the applicant that was discovered by the town engineer, with the expectation that the surveyor would put it onto the site plan, and we could deal with that issue. It wasn't put on the site plan. So that information is available. I don't know how much site investigation needs to be done, because if, if the sewer line is connected the way that it's shown on this, this as-built, then that should take care of that situation. But to be fair also, the fact is that the ZBA did vary a lot of the requirements that, quite a number of the requirements frankly, that you would typically see on a site plan. That, for instance, there's no landscape plan, because there's no landscaping required, because the variance that the ZBA granted basically did away with any landscape requirements. Frontage buffer along the street, interior landscaping, et cetera, et cetera. And I think on the site plan, the larger site plan, the single sheet, there's a list of the actual variances that the ZBA granted. So that's, that's the ZBA's purview. They decided to do that. So there's no landscaping to show. The lighting is a legitimate, I think, question, and we should have better detail information. You would typically see foot candles on the plan, so we could check and see whether things were spread. This is an industrial zone. There is residential across the street. You know, it's the rear is the railroad, and to the other side is, is the highway. So a little bit less of an issue, but sure, you know, for the site plan, we should probably at least have that documentation. So the original waiver request that came in had, I think, eight or nine different items in it. We worked with AJ to eliminate that down to basically those two provisions in the utility section, which, you know, they're now willing to, to provide. So maybe that'll clarify things, or not. But if you wanted to continue it for two weeks, and we can sit down and we can have the plan, we can have the survey information, as-built information actually put onto the plan, we can certainly do that. We can try to have some foot candle information for you for the lighting, better details for the wall packs, if that's your, your preference, we could.
Yeah, thank you. And if I, if I may indulge the rest of my commissioners, what also concerns me that I'd like to see on there is, again, I understand, but I'm going to read, I'm just going to quote right here from the documentation. It has not been determined at this time whether or not the groundwater monitoring is still required or not, and you've kind of alluded to that with the old abandoned well, if the well has been properly decommissioned. I mean, that, that's a concern to me. I don't want to really pass anything tonight as a condition on that. I want to have more information on that. And I also like the idea, you're going to be bringing down the camera into that sewer line, and maybe that could be done also. We can't without excavating the parking lot. It's. Well, then I'll have to wait. We'll make that a condition. But having said that, I, at this point, agree with Commissioner DeGray. I want more detail on this application. I like what you're doing there, but I want to see more things. And I would recommend that we make a motion to table this item and let the applicant work with staff to produce better documentation for our following meeting. And I'm open to any other comments, but that's, that's where I'm leaning at this point.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I also agree with, with you and Commissioner DeGray about, I think there's a lack of information, of required information that should be there. I don't understand why the ZBA is letting a variance for landscaping requirements. I mean, I'm looking at this building from the street. It's right up, built on the street, right across the street from a residential zone. And it's this wall, I, I'm not even sure, what is it, 20? It's so small, I can't even read it. I don't know, it's 20-something feet tall?
Yeah.
And 50, 60 feet long, and it's built on the street. And that's it. That's what the neighbors across the street are going to be looking at. Some sort of plantings, trees or something should have been put there, but, you know, I get it. The ZBA waived it, and we're stuck with it. And unfortunately, the neighbors are stuck with it. And it's, it's too bad, but I don't know what they were thinking with, with respect to that. But it is an industrial zone. I get it. And it's, it's surrounded by residential, so a little bit more consideration probably should have been taken in regards to that.
Commissioner Higley?
If John is correct that the wall shows it 20 feet tall, you can't have a wall that tall. In zoning, you can't have a wall that tall. The tallest that I'm aware of is eight feet. And they don't get, they didn't get a variance for that.
Did you say eight feet? I'm sorry, did you say eight?
Sorry, I couldn't hear.
Go ahead.
I said that, John said the wall was 20 feet tall.
Yep.
You can't have a wall 20 feet tall. The zoning regulations call for a wall not to be taller than eight feet. So unless you got a variance for it, you can't have a 20-foot-tall wall.
I don't know what wall we're talking about.
The sidewall.
Wall by the street, where the neighbors are looking.
I think you can go to 24 feet, I'm pretty sure.
Talking about a building?
Height of the building.
I'm referring, I was referring to the building height.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was the wall.
It's not a fence. This is, this is the building structure wall.
Exactly.
Oh, I apologize. I thought it was a wall.
It's an industrial zone.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's an industrial zone, and it meets the height requirements for the.
I believe it'll be shorter than, than the building to the right. Any other comments? Commissioner Majmudar?
Yes, I think. I do see some architectural plans here. A-200 and.
Yep.
That may be sufficient, or add a few items that the commission.
There are more architecturals. That's, that's all I was told to provide.
Right, so.
There are more.
Maybe between the planning department and the applicant.
Sure, absolutely.
A little better communication.
To, to basically speak to the architectural plans. The Planning and Zoning Commission is not the building department, and you don't want to be the building department, all right? So a typical set of architectural plans include all of the details for the construction. Commissioner Petronella can speak to this, I'm sure, and maybe others there. So with purpose of a Planning and Zoning Commission application for a site plan and special permit, this is not a historic district, this is not a design district, this is an industrial zone. So we would typically look at the floor plans, drawn to scale to identify the interior uses, and we would look at the elevations, which is what you have, you know, with you. So we can check door locations for sidewalks and egress, things that affect the site plan, part of it. So, you know, AJ provided eight, 10, 12 sheets, or whatever it was of details, door schedules, roof plans, et cetera, et cetera. We don't typically, we don't need those, because you have no authority or jurisdiction in reviewing it, so there's no reason, you know, to give it to you. So this is literally a rectangular box with, you know, concrete block walls and a roof on it. So there's not, in terms of architecturals, there's not a lot of detail to, frankly, to provide. So that's, I hope that explains why.
Thank you. I think the gist of it, Commissioner was, they would like a little bit more detail, I think. I think that's the gist I'm getting, so.
Lighting and the monitoring.
Commissioner Petronella?
I, I think it meets the requirement of what they need to submit as far as building elevations and floor plans, and a section and so forth. But I mean, I think it meets that requirement. What it lacks is, in the small scale, I didn't bring my magnifying glasses either, but I just, we just popped it up on, on the computer, on the screen. That wall's 24 foot, 9 inches tall.
You dropped off 14 copies of full sets.
Yeah.
Size sets.
And we're, we're looking at it online right now, or, you know, and, and we could see it right now, so, I mean.
Well, I just wanted to make, I didn't, I dropped them all, the elevations and everything, full size.
And we have them on, on the computer, so.
Okay. We just didn't get them in our packet.
We didn't get it in our packet.
It would be easier to read.
Yeah, yeah. But I, I think it meets the intent of elevations, floor plans, which is a minimal requirement. We don't need full building, building plans, just elevation and floor plans. I think it meets that pretty much. But the site plan needs to be pretty much complete, 100%, and stamped by, by a civil engineer. And I noticed that it is stamped, but it, we feel it's, it's incomplete with respect And I noticed that it is stamped, but we feel it's incomplete with respect to utility, connections, and so forth.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Majmuddar?
The question is more for the staff. I understand that the applicant went to the ZBA and has several different approvals for various waivers. Is this a normal process to go to ZBA before coming before the planning and zoning?
100% yes.
I'm just trying to understand the process, that if somebody else, another agency, has already approved various bits and pieces of this, it puts a restriction on what the PZC should be looking at and approving or asking for more.
So, this is a non-conforming site in the first place, and so, and they were going to continue or modify some of the non-conformities. So, but the process is to go to the board of, the zoning board of appeals prior to going to planning and zoning, because if you don't get the variances from them, then they don't know how to define their own site plan. So, that really is pretty much the process. So, you know, if they've, if they've shown that they have a hardship, then the zoning board of appeals has the right to grant a variance.
Okay.
So, they must have found that there was an actual hardship due to whatever. When we, if you would like, we could include that, those variances in there, you know, what they're, maybe the minutes for it, so you could see what the discussion was, if that's what you would like.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Any other comments? Is there a motion to...
I just have one question, because I guess I didn't realize that ZBA had the authority to waive landscapes and things like that in a planning...
It's not a waiver, it's a variance. So, they varied the requirements, and I think because it was, it's sort of that way now. There's, it's actually all pavement right now, so they're not really, they're not, it's hard to, they could, they could have required or not granted the hardship, the variance, but they decided that it was right for the site. So, they have the right to vary anything within the zoning regulations.
Thank you.
But like I said, this thing is, it's all pavement. It is 100% I believe pavement right now.
Yeah.
Right, and not to belabor the point, but for instance, our regulations don't make a distinction between industrial zones, residential zones. A parking lot is a parking lot. So, for instance, with respect to interior landscaping, many communities have adopted regulations that recognize the fact that industrial properties are different than a shopping mall. So, you typically would not have the amount of interior landscaping that you would have for a shopping mall for an industrial zone. You've got truck movements, you've got exterior storage, you have basically, it's an industrial use in an industrial zone, and we don't have that here. So, they were faced with the difficulty of either complying with regulations, trying to comply with regulations that really didn't apply to the use, and frankly, the project never would have went forward without the variances, or going to ZBA, as they have a right to do, and get variances from the ZBA, from those provisions that were, basically, it makes sense. And, you know, the ZBA has their authority by statute. They chose to do what they did, and what you have before you tonight reflects what they did.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
There was no opposition, no one came to the meeting at all last time.
I like the idea, please, can you, well, let's see what happens here. Well, if, if, if the majority agrees to table this item so that you can work back with Matt for the next two weeks to get more data on these plans, I think the commission would like to see the minutes from that ZBA meeting where they granted all these different conditions. So, is there a motion to table this?
I make a motion, we table...
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify what is still pending. So, I think what I've heard is that they need to show the sewer, the actual sewer on the site.
Yeah.
They need to...
Lighting.
No, what is, it's the well. So, they have to, they have to figure out what that well is, and also the lighting.
And lighting.
So, I think the only things that are remaining, correct?
Yes.
If I may add another comment, just in response to Matt, the, the large detail A on the site plan shows the area in front of the building. It says area to be loomed and ceded, so they are showing something in the form of landscaping to do on there. So, obviously, they didn't waive that, they're not paving that. Yeah, great, but it's just absent some effort to try to screen that large building, that wall. This building is what, 20 feet off the street line? And it's 24 foot, 9 inches tall, I believe, and it's just a, it's just a solid wall. There's no windows in it, there's no doors in it, there's no nothing. It's just a huge wall. And it'd be nice to see some sort of effort made by the applicant to throw a couple of trees up there, to do something that would screen that wall or kind of take it away a little bit. I know it's not required, but it certainly would be a good gesture for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Are they doing chain link?
I make a motion.
Perhaps maybe they could consider maybe just putting the slats in the chain link fence, that'll do something. So, this, this as a suggestion, but again, it is not required.
We'll let them work that out.
Yeah, we have those four items, and if you want to table it, then we'll work with...
Is a motion made to table?
To table SPR 1901, 160 Spring Street.
Is there a second?
For two weeks.
Second to table it?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Higley. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing on, we're going to table this, you have time now to work with staff diligently now over the next two weeks for our next meeting. All those in favor of tabling this item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The record showed there's seven, nothing to table this item.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Back up here. Moving on to new public hearings. Secretary, whenever you're ready.
Yes, Mr. Chair. The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing at the regular meeting on Thursday, September 8th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Council Chambers at 8:20 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. X.P., or X.S.P. number 3045, 155 Raffia Road, application for freestanding sign JFK Middle School renovation building committee. Applicant, town of Enfield owner, MAP 68, Lot 149, R88 Zone.
Thank you. Is the applicant or representative here? Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Bruce Kellogg. I'm a principal with J.C.J. Architecture.
And I'm Jill Lexi. I'm an architect of J.C.J. Architecture.
Thank you. Is the mic turned on still, John?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Please go ahead and proceed.
So, this application, and I'm sure many of you have been by the school, and it's been under construction for the last couple of years, is one of the last pieces of the renovation to the JFK Middle School. It is a replacement sign for the existing sign that was out there in front of the Media Center Edition that was done about 20 years ago. This sign is going to go in that exact same location. The existing sign was 30 square feet, which is permitted under your permitting, up to 32 square feet, and we've met with Rick to review this. The sign we're proposing is 31 and 1/2 square feet, so it's still within your regulations. It's our understanding that Rick has sent the information to all the appropriate individuals, and he's received comments, or very few comments back, and you should have a package of information. If you don't, we have some copies of the information here for the Commissioners if you would like.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Higley?
The bottom part is going to be LED. Is that moving or stationary?
Stationary. It's...
Okay, thank you.
Well, my question is, how come this could not fit into the 30 square feet? I mean, there's a reason why we need to go 31 and 1/2.
Yes, there is. Actually, the signage company, the modules they use come in certain sizes, and we struggled to get it within that size both, and it's both in the lengthwise and widthwise dimensions. So, that's why we ended up with the 31 and 1/2.
And that's because of the digitized on the bottom messaging board?
Yes.
So, my other question is, is this an initiative that's being brought about from the superintendent's office? Or is this an initiative just being brought about by the building committee?
This was through the building committee.
Is this an initiative that's being brought about by the Board of Education?
No, the only initiative was to, if you're familiar with JFK Middle School...
Very well.
The logo that they had on the original sign is outdated. They had adopted a new one.
Sure.
So, that started the conversation, and it just developed off of that.
So, I guess what I'm alluding to is I'm, I don't want to say concerned, but just confused if this is not coming from the Board of Education central office, if it's not coming from the Board of Education members, elected members, this is just a project that the building committee would like to see done. So, I'm going to go to staff, because at this point, you have been working with someone from the BOE office about replacing the Enfield High sign, correct?
Typically, not myself personally, typically signs are managed by Rick Rochelli, the zoning officer, so he'd be much more familiar with this.
My understanding is they have been negotiating with the change to that, and yet that type of request has not come from them concerning this digitized sign that needs to be larger. That's just a traditional sign that's not being changed, it's being moved. So, I guess my point is, I don't understand the need for this. I don't understand the desire for this, other than from this building committee. It's not coming from anyone else from the town. I haven't heard it from any elected officials. I haven't heard from the BOE office. I haven't heard it from the principal of the school. I'm just hearing it from the building committee that they want to have us grant the waiver for this sign. And I'm sorry to make a big deal about it, but it's a big deal to me, because I'm not hearing it from all the other circles that matter.
So, the best way I can answer that is the building committee does have representatives of the Board of Ed on the committee.
Yep.
I can't speak to conversations they may or may not have had out of the building committee venue, so I just know we've responded to the request to update the logo and update the sign. Again, same location, so it's not going to be moved anywhere else on the site, and that's the request.
And I'm sorry to put you on the spot, because I realize you're not. I was hoping someone from that was going to be here.
I appreciate the question. It's a valid question. So, that's, you know, but we wanted to make sure we were in the allowable 32 square feet. We did, as I said, we reviewed with Rick that it was originally 30 square feet. We tried to make it work with, again, the manufacturer's modules for the signage, and it just, it was the best we could come up with.
Okay, thank you.
Didn't want to make it too small, so you wouldn't see the sign either.
Sure, sure. Again, I'm sorry for dumping on you. I was hoping someone from the building committee was going to be here tonight, but thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to point a clarification, that the town manager did sign the application.
Yeah, I did see that. Okay. Any other questions? No. Any other concerns? Okay. Okay, Mr. Secretary, is there a motion to approve? Oh, excuse me, hold on, proceeding. See, we take over a month off, you forget the procedures. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak for or against this application? Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak for or against this application?
I have a question, real quick. I do.
You have to come out and identify yourself.
Sorry about this, because this is important, because I was part of the PTO. The original sign...
Identify yourself for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry. Nikki Price, 1324 Enfield Street.
Thank you.
The original sign was purchased by the PTO. We, I would think it was like $13,000, okay? We had to hold it in escrow because it didn't meet the qualification, we had to get a waiver. It was such a long process. So, my question is, what happens to this poor sign that the PTO 20 years ago paid for it and bought it, and now it's just gone, and it's $13,000 out the window? I just want to point that out to all of you.
Thank you.
I think it's an important fact for you to recognize and for the staff to recognize. The original sign was paid for the, by the parents of the PTO. That's why I wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Maybe you'll hear back from some of the building committee what they're going to do with it.
We will ask the building committee.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody else like to speak for or against this application? That was for the third time for the final. Would you have any more questions? Staff have anything they want to add on this? Applicants have anything more they want to add on it? Make a motion to close the public hearing, someone?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Majmuddar to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Higley. All those, any discussion? All those in favor? Say aye. Record showed the names to close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve application X.S.P. number 3045, 155 Raffia Road, application for special permit to allow freestanding sign having no more than 31.5 square feet of the sign area per site at JFK Middle School, per the reference plans and application of supportive materials of record, with the 11 conditions listed.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Who wants it?
Ken.
Motion made by Secretary Petronella, seconded by Commissioner Holinsky to approve. Any discussion? Seeing on roll call.
Louis Fiore.
Against.
Linda DeGray.
Against.
Virginia Higley.
Against.
Kiran Majmuddar.
Four.
Kenneth Holinsky.
Four.
Christian D. Antonio.
Four.
And John Petronella is four.
The record showed the pass four to three. You're all set, have your sign. Thank you. Okay, now we're moving on to, jumped around here. Now, we're moving on to all public hearings. We don't have to reiterate this. We're going to be reopening public hearing, PH 3040 MA, 1297 Enfield Street. Is the applicant or their representative here? I should say representative.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Attorney Carl Landelina, 47 Spring Street in Windsor Locks.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, recusing myself from the...
Yes, hold on, yes, Commissioner Petronella is recusing himself.
Okay, thank you.
So, that only leaves six commissioners here tonight for this thing. And Attorney Landelina, I do have something I want to mention for the public before you start, if you don't mind?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Just so that the, I'm sure the rest of the commissioners know, and the applicant, I'm sure knows, but that the residents know that the petition has been, the legal opinion for the petition, it has been denied. There's a variety of various legal reasons why that has been denied. But basically, I'm just going to read the finding for the record. The finding, based on the petitions presented, they do not equate to the minimum 20% of the lot area within the 500-foot boundary area. Therefore, the petition fails, and a supermajority vote will not be required should the application be approved. Basically, it was stated to me that during the deliberation, it should be clarified for the record that the petition is denied due to the lack of standing. So, for the record, that has been there. If anyone is interested, I'm sure they can get a copy of the legal opinion from town staff. Having said that, thank you, Attorney Landelina. Is that clarified at clearly enough, staff, do you think, for the record? Thank you very much. Thank you for letting me get that in before we even start tonight.
Of course. I think it was important to do that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Carl Landelina for the applicants, Felician Sisters of North America Trust. To my left, your right this evening is Kristen Anderson from the developer, the Community Builders, and to my right is Bridget Armstrong, a member of the Felician Sisters family. And speaking to you very briefly tonight will be Mark Vertucci from Foston O'Neill. He's a traffic engineer, prepared the study that you have in front of you. I know there were some questions raised by both members of the commission, as well as members of the public, as to the information, some of the information that was in that study, so he's here to clarify that for the record for you this evening. So, I'm going to do very little talking. I'm sure you'll appreciate that. And I'm going to turn it over right now to Kristen Anderson from the Community Builders.
Great. Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you so much for having us back. I just wanted to spend a few minutes just responding to some of the questions that came up at the last hearing that we were at, so hopefully I've answered them all and provided the clarifications, but again, we're here to answer any additional questions as well. Oops. Sorry, getting used to the PowerPoint. Great. So, one question was on the clarification of the buildings, the existing uses and proposed uses, and sort of explaining the master plan a little bit more clearly. So, this is the master plan that we are proposing for the development. In your packet, I think it'll be a little more clear than maybe it is on this PowerPoint, but there are buildings that are labeled number one, number two, number three, four, five, six, and seven. So, what I wanted to, and here on this master plan, and I'll go through the different buildings in a second, I also wanted to highlight where the historic boundary is along the property, and then clarify that when we came back at the last zoning meeting, or sorry, the last planning commission meeting, what we had proposed was, instead of changing the zone for the whole parcel, to change the zone line on part of the parcel, so the proposed zone change would be this area here on the sort of top of that yellow line, and this would be the proposed zone line. And that was really to address any concerns around the impact on the historic district. So, I'll explain some of the buildings on the campus and what their existing use and their proposed use is. their proposed use is. So building number one is the Saint Felix Center, and that is currently a vacant building. It's been vacant for three or four years. It's been boarded up. There, there's no use on that building, and it used to be a novitiate house, used to be a training program for the nuns. And what is being proposed on that building is to reuse that existing building and to add in addition, to turn it into senior housing. The other main building on the campus is the convent.
How many units?
Oh, I'm sorry. This would be fifty apartments total. And then the other main building, existing building on the campus that would be reused and remodeled would be the convent. So the convent right now, this convent was built for about a hundred and fifty sisters. There's a hundred and forty-six dwelling units within it. And right now, there's twenty-four sisters that live here. The whole north wing of the convent is currently vacant, has been vacated, is not being used at all. And the sisters have some rooms within the south wing of the convent. And so the proposed use for this building would be to keep the building and to renovate it up to seventy units of senior elderly housing. Then there's the buildings that we are proposing to do new construction on. So we're proposing two buildings, sort of in the rear of the property. That would be the southeast corner. That would be proposed to be non-age-restricted, or what we call family housing. So those are those two buildings highlighted in yellow. Those buildings do not exist currently. Those would be new construction. Then there are the...
How many units again?
Oh, I'm sorry. There would be a hundred and nine units in those new buildings. Thank you, Carl. And then there's the buildings that there would be no change to on the campus. So we would, there's no plans to develop these or change the existing use of them. So the first is the Saint Francis House, which is at the rear of the Orin Thompson Mansion. And the Saint Francis House is currently twenty-two units of elderly housing. So there's already residents that live, that are seniors in that building. The Orin Thompson Mansion, I think you're all familiar with. It's the historic building on the campus. That is currently being used by the Enfield Montessori School as their middle school and would continue to be used as such. There's also the Enfield Montessori Elementary School, and it's adjacent to that. And that, again, would continue to operate as a school and no change in the use, or, you know, no sort of change to the building. And then the last part is the chapel, which is on, it's connected to the convent, but there would be no proposed change to the chapel. That would remain as it is. So the next thing I wanted to talk about, there was a question about sort of the views. We had shown a view from Enfield Street and were asked to show it in different seasons. So I think the last one we had was like a summertime view. So this is an existing autumn view in which there are trees that are sort of blocking where the proposed housing would be. So from, just to orient you, this is Enfield Street, looking on to the Orin Thompson Mansion. And right here, tucked away back behind this tree, is the Saint Felix Center. And so the new construct, or the addition and any new construction would be behind this building, and it would match the height of this building, and is being designed to really minimize any view impact, and therefore, any impact on the character of the neighborhood. And so we tried to do an exercise of what this would look like in the winter. And so we removed some of the deciduous trees and imagined that you might be able to see this gray area might be what is visible. One thing I want to point out, though, about this rendering, we, you know, we tried to make it as clear so that you could see what the views would look like. If you go back to the master plan, one thing that's part of the master plan is proposing new landscaping development, or, sorry, new landscaping within the historic playgrounds. So that is something that is not being reflected in here. So any additional trees, you know, especially if they would, you know, if we wanted more evergreen trees that would last, that hasn't been factored into this rendering.
Point out the new building to the left of the birch tree.
This one right here.
No.
That's the existing building.
No, no, but isn't that, that's the addition to...
No. This is, this right here is the Orin Thompson House. This is existing.
Sorry.
This would be the addition.
Right. But to the left of the birch tree, isn't there another...
No.
...box for the new buildings?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. And then this was a question that actually came up. I had a conversation with a neighbor after the last public hearing, so I won't spend too much time on this, but I realized we've been using the phrase intergenerational housing to talk about the fact that there would be some buildings that would be specifically for seniors and designed for seniors, and some buildings that would not have an age restricted, any age restriction on them. So there could be families, there could be individuals living there. But I think there was a misunderstanding that when we talk about intergenerational housing, that we're talking about the model where there's multiple generations living under one roof in one household. And so I just wanted to clarify for the record that that's not what we're proposing here. We are proposing separate apartment buildings, senior housing buildings, non-senior housing buildings. The units would, the apartments within them would be either, you know, for a single household. You wouldn't have multiple households living in apartments. So each person would have their own space. So just, again, wanting to clarify for the record, because I think that's just an important distinction we didn't want to confuse people on. And the last thing I'll say about this is, this is a very intentional model that the sisters have decided that they wanted to pursue, mostly based on their experience working with the school and working with the seniors on campus, and really, a lot of the data around why it's good to have communities in which you have senior citizens, and you have young people, and you have all sorts of generations living near each other in a greater community. And then another question, I know we were asked to be more specific on what the projections were of the population. So we did a couple things to this. We both looked at Enfield, and we also looked at our comparable properties. So we looked at properties that are in Connecticut and in, just over the border within, you know, like, within thirty miles of here for, in Massachusetts. And the reason we did this is we wanted to look at properties that were also similar in characteristics, you know, next to schools, that were in suburban communities, that would have similar, you know, types of people who are living and working here, and maybe have the same type of needs in terms of their transportation needs, et cetera. And so using that data, we looked at, and we also looked at senior properties when it came to population. So we looked at how many units there were that were studios through two bedrooms, which would be what we're proposing, and how many people lived in those units. And what we found is that the average number of residents in our non-age-restricted units, our family units, was one point six seven residents per unit. For our senior properties, it was one point oh one seniors per unit. And so based on that number, and based on the fact that what we're proposing is a total of two hundred and thirty units within all those buildings that I was sharing with you in the master plan, we would predict that there would be three hundred and four people on the campus using this model. And then one thing we looked at was, you know, when it was at its full capacity with all the sisters living in the novitiate house and in the convent, there were about a hundred and sixty-seven. So this is more than that, but based on sort of the actual comps that we have. And then we looked at school-aged children. And we had provided a projection at the last, or the first meeting that we were at, based on a number of different studies through Connecticut and Rutgers University. And we went back and actually looked at our properties that we have and counted the number of school-aged children that were there. And what we found is that the average number of school-aged children was point three seven per unit. So for every two point seven unit of family housing, you had one school-aged children. So based on that projection, we rounded up to, and we looked at the difference in one bedrooms and two bedrooms, we didn't have any school-aged children in any of the one bedrooms. So looking at that, we are projecting twenty school-aged children on this entire campus. And so when you factor in the total number of units for the campus, it's about eight percent of the campus would be school-aged children. And we also looked at the school-aged children in different properties in Enfield. So we worked with the Enfield Public Schools Bus Company and looked at how many children, school-aged children are getting picked up by the bus system there from these different properties. And as you can see, it sort of ranges. Crossroads had the most percentage of their units, had school-aged children in it. We fall, you know, our projection puts us right sort of in that center part of that range. And one thing we sort of looked at, too, is how many school, you know, out of these types of multifamily apartment complexes in Enfield, how many school-aged children are really living in these complexes? And it makes up about one point five seven percent of all the school-aged children are living in this multifamily housing. And then we got, I appreciated the question on reducing vehicle reliance as part of this project, and I'll talk a little bit also about our car data, too. So we did look at the, we didn't have data for one of our properties, but we did look at the number of cars per unit. And this is now including, there's, a lot of these properties also have three bedrooms, which we're not proposing as part of this project. But we couldn't separate out the, you know, the cars for the three bedrooms versus the one to two, so we factored that all in. And what we found, which has been consistent with a lot of our planning, is that it was point seven three cars per unit. So even in, you know, two and three bedrooms, we're seeing a low number of vehicle use. And, you know, what we're projecting on the campus would be a hundred and sixty-seven cars, based on this number. And right now, there's currently a hundred and fifty-nine parking spaces on the campus. So we are proposing building more parking to meet the parking regulations, but I just wanted to sort of put that in perspective on the scale. But the way that we achieve that and how we can make it possible for people to not have to rely on having multiple car households are a few things. One is really the location of the properties and where we build, which I'll talk about in a second. But we also add enhancements to our buildings that make it more bike and walkable friendly. So in this particular case here, this is a picture at one of our properties nearby that has a bike shelter that we use. A lot of our buildings also include bike storage in them. So that's a way that, you know, I'm a cyclist, and so I know how important it is to like, you know, be able to take your bike out of the rain and make sure it's safe, so that if you're relying on transportation, you can come back to it. This doesn't reduce car, vehicle traffic, but I think it's really important in our sustainability goals. We do put EV charging stations in our new developments. I think that's the way things are going. There's a lot of opportunities to get more sustainable with how we're using vehicles, and so this is a priority for us. And then we really do try and promote pedestrian-friendly uses on the campus. So a big priority, we're working through this master plan, was looking at walking paths and how that's connecting different buildings. It was really important to the seniors to be able to have that ability to get out and to move. And then also, you know, recognizing that seniors are not using their cars at the same time that maybe a family is using their car. And the last piece I skipped over in the beginning was the bus pickup on the campus. So there is a bus line that goes right through there, and we've had some preliminary conversations with them about coming directly onto the campus, so they could pick up the seniors specifically. And so going back to the location piece, just some key factors about why this is a good location and why this sort of fits a lot of the character there. The Felician Campus is located, you know, in terms of bike lanes and being bikeable and walkable, there's a number of different connected routes already within Enfield. And I believe Enfield also just got a grant to extend or improve one of the bike lanes that's nearby. So this just highlights, here's where the campus is and the connectivity to the commercial areas, as well as to recreational areas. This is also a map of, so this is Enfield High School. So to give you a sense, the Felician Campus is right around here, I believe, maybe a little further down here. And so this shows you the yellow bus line and the different amenities that it stops at, including the senior center, which is a big piece, including the library, high school. And then also the blue line, which the yellow line will connect with, and location of other sort of emergency service providers nearby. So all of this was sort of, when we looked at, you know, is this the right property to do a multifamily, you know, senior intergenerational campus? We really sort of believe, and I think the sisters believe, that there's a lot of benefits to this location for that. And then we talked a little bit about sort of how STD has been used for properties like Bigelow. And it led us to look a little bit more into the Bigelow example, and how much this project that we're proposing is similar to these types of projects in Enfield. So, you know, you have Bigelow, which converted the factory into apartments. One interesting thing to note is that in Enfield, there are a number of mixed-income apartments that utilize similar type of workforce housing that we're talking about developing, including Bigelow Commons, Countrywood, Enfield, and Crossroads, which all have income-restricted units in them, similar to what we're proposing. And just to compare why this project is, you know, similar to that type of model, you know, they both take into consideration the transportation needs in the area and really building off that. A lot of the design amenities that we're proposing as part of this master plan are similar to what you would find in another type of, you know, market rate or mixed-income community. You know, the example of Bigelow, that's a large-scale project. It's a very dense development, more so than what we're proposing here. And again, different mixes of incomes that are provided through it. And I think both, you know, thinking about what we offer in terms of the nineteen acres of open space that would be preserved on this campus is similar to, you know, being able to walk down to the river or be able to go over to the town green. And then vacancy rate. So we know that this zone requires that the site must be eighty percent vacant in order to be eligible. And so, you know, we came to this conclusion that the STD zone was appropriate, given how vacant a lot of the properties are on the campus that we're proposing, redeveloping, and really needing that occupancy in order to be able to sustain the development. So as we mentioned, there's the Saint Felix Center, which is completely unoccupied, and the convent, which is mostly unoccupied. And this visual just gives you a sense, you know, when it's a fully occupied building, when there's, you know, a hundred and forty-six sisters that are living there and another twenty-one in the other building, you have the use of the building. You have enough sort of sustainable, you have to, you know, pay for the utilities, you have to keep the mechanical systems up, you have to repair all the functions that are there. And you still have to do that with the building, even though there's only twenty-four sisters that are living there. So, you know, we felt very strongly that when we looked at the calculation of the floor area, that we do meet the vacancy requirements. And, you know, right now, the sisters are maintaining and subsidizing a hundred and thirty-five thousand square feet of vacant space in those two existing buildings. There were also some questions, though, that came up about, you know, other sort of areas, not just the dwelling units the sisters are in, so I just wanted to provide a few clarifications. One is that the chapel, that rather large chapel space, is only being used by the twenty-four sisters currently in that, in that convent. Again, it was designed for over a hundred and fifty people to come worship. The gym that's there, which I can point out later in the master plan, there's a, like a sort of play gym with a basketball court, that is currently not used by anyone. I think there was a question about whether the Enfield Montessori School used it, and it's not up to code, and so the Enfield Montessori School is not able to use that. It's not used by the sisters. It does have some boxes of storage in there, which I'll show you an image of. And then for the rooms that aren't occupied by the sisters, right now, they're not serving any purpose. They might have an empty bed or some empty shelving, but there's no sort of meetings that are happening, there's no, or not on a regular basis. It's really sort of just that, you know, they're just existing, that those empty rooms are not providing operational use for the convent. There is an auditorium that, again, the sisters have not been using, but they do allow Enfield Montessori School students to use that space because, because right now, there's no other use for that space, and it has no purpose for the sisters. And so during inclement weather or for a presentation, they allow the Enfield Montessori School to come over occasionally and use it. And so one of the parts of this master plan would be to dedicate that space, moving forward, to the Montessori School, so that they do have an auditorium space. And these are just some pictures of what it looks like inside. So this is the gym. This is one half of the gym, and you can see there's still some furniture and things like that that the sisters have left in there, because they're, I think, waiting for a plan to figure out what to do with that, and it's, you know, to move that would be cost prohibitive at this point. These are some of the vacant rooms. So this is the furniture that's left in it and the shelving units. But again, I think moving it would require a plan to figure out what was next. And then I think, you know, the question has come up multiple times about us as the developer, the community builders. And, you know, one thing that I just wanted to point out and highlight is that we do this work across New England, we do this work in Connecticut a lot, and we're very often sought out by other nonprofit partners. And why we are a nonprofit, we are a large nonprofit, but, you know, we're large in the sense of the way, like Habitat Humanity has different chapters all over. You know, that allows us to be both local, as well as have the infrastructure to do really high-quality work. And I think that's why people seek us out as partners, to come and be able to help them achieve the goals of their mission. And so, you know, there's just really three key tenets I wanted to stress. You know, one is that we really focus on the quality of housing that we build. You know, we use really highly energy-efficient, sustainable models for housing. We are competitive with luxury and market-rate housing out there. We have really high development and design standards. And I think the fact that we've built thirty-two thousand apartments since nineteen sixty-four sort of shows our longevity and our track record, that if we were not a good developer, we wouldn't be able to sustain ourselves this long. We also really focus on managing well. So this comes down to the property management that we do. You know, so we currently manage thirteen thousand apartments. And in our line of work, there's a lot of... And in our line of work, there's a lot of funders. There's a lot of regulators. There's a lot of people who are looking to make sure that you're managing those buildings well, that they're clean, that they're safe, that they're not causing blight in the communities. And the fact that we currently own and manage 13,000, I think, is really talking about the trust that's in us as a property manager. We would not be able to keep doing this work and have this type of portfolio if we were not living up to the community's expectations. And then the last piece is just the owning responsibly. So when we approach these projects, we're not, again, I want to stress, we're not a turnkey developer. We enter into a long-term partnership. We have an ownership stake, the same way a homeowner has an ownership stake. And so we want our properties to do well. We want them to be sustainable. Because if not, that comes back to us. We're not just walking away. So again, just going back to the 13,000 apartments that we do own and manage. And I won't dig too much into this, but I'm always happy to answer questions on the property management piece because I know that that's something that is really important because it impacts the neighbors. It impacts the people who live in our apartments. And it impacts, you know, the work that we do moving forward. And so just, you know, this is our model that we, you know, really sort of apply to every project that we have relating to staffing, relating to different community services that we do. But the three to just really point out is like the importance of maintenance is really key, especially, you know, the sisters have been stewards of that land for 100 years almost, and they maintain it immaculately. And, you know, right now, they're doing their best to keep that up when they don't have the sort of sustainability anymore. The next piece is resident selection. You know, making sure that every single one of our residents feels safe and feels that they're part of a community is extremely important to us. And I think that's extremely important to the neighbors as well. And that we do have, you know, standards for ourselves and codes of conduct in making sure that there's communication, making sure there's opportunities to be able to provide feedback that we are continuing striving to be a good neighbor and a good manager. And then one question that I saw in the staff report, I don't think it came up from the commission. This is the last question, was around who we met with in the ART. And so just to clarify, there were two meetings that we had with the ART. One was this year, one was last year when we were first developing the idea. And between those two meetings, there were representatives from the fire department, building department, engineering department, police department, public health, and the planning department. Not all of these representatives were at both meetings, but we've sat down and talked with them as part of those meetings. We also had multiple conversations with Lori, the director of planning. We also met with the director of economic development, the town manager, assistant town manager, and the mayor. So just, I know that was a question, so that's a clarification. And I think that, hopefully, I covered everything. But again, happy to answer more. And I guess now we'll turn it over to Mark to talk about the traffic study.
Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm Mark Fertucci. I'm a vice president at Fussin O'Neil. We're at 146 Hartford Road in Manchester. I am a registered professional engineer in Connecticut and a registered professional traffic operations engineer as well. We did prepare a traffic impact study dated June 2nd. It was updated on June 2nd. We also issued a response to traffic comments letter on July 14th. I just want to briefly recap the findings of the study with you and also address some questions that came up on the data that we used in the study. First of all, the site access has been described. We're consolidating access driveways out there, down to four, down to three, which is good access management and that we're taking one of those curb cuts out, reducing the amount of vehicle conflicts. So that's a safer operation out there on South Road. The westerly drive there is going to be shared with the Montessori School and the two easterly drives will be dedicated for the residential units. As part of our study, we did review traffic impacts at each of those three intersections on South Road. Also, we took a look at the operations at Route 5 and Enfield Street at South Road as well. For traffic counts that we used in this study, I know there were some questions on this. What we used was the latest available pre-COVID traffic count data that was from the Montessori School study that was done. This is what the Department of Transportation provided to us and recommended that we use for the study. Those volumes were done in the morning and afternoon, school peak hours. So this is roughly 7:00 to 8:00 o'clock in the morning and 2:00 to 3:00 o'clock in the afternoon. This is really when the highest volumes out there are throughout the day with the Montessori School right there and of course, the high school around the corner as well. So we use those volumes and we projected them out to what we expect will be the full build-out year, design year, which is 2031. So roughly nine years out from now. We used a growth factor, a six-tenth of a percent per year growth factor to bump those volumes up. That growth rate was provided by DOT as well. So the volumes we've used in this study are highly conservative, having grown them 15 years out. You know, after COVID, traffic volumes here have really leveled out and in some cases even dropped. They're not growing like this. So they are conservative. I went ahead and I cross-checked those volumes with the latest DOT counts that were done out on South Road and on Route 5. Those were done in 2019. If you project those volumes out by the same growth rate, the volumes we used in our study are higher. Furthermore, we went out and did our own counts last year in 2021 at the study intersections and the same deal there. The volumes that we've used in our analysis were higher than if you grew out the latest count. So we're very confident in the data and this is a conservative analysis. We also counted the commuter peak hour of traffic in the afternoon, which is a little bit later, 4:00 to 5:00 o'clock. And those volumes are generally on the same level as the school peak hour. Now, as far as traffic from the proposed residential units, we utilized rates provided in the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. This is an industry-accepted resource for determining traffic generation. In four of the 108 multifamily housing units and the 120 senior housing units, the manual projects will have 24 new entering trips in the morning peak hour of traffic and 61 exiting trips. And in the afternoon peak hour, 57 entering trips and 36 exiting. So this is low generating use. Particularly, the senior housing component of it is the lowest traffic-generating residential use in the ITE manual. So not a significant impact on the adjacent road network. And I'll also note, we didn't take any, we were discussing earlier the bicycle and pedestrian accommodations and transit in the vicinity of the site. We did not take any credit for multimodal use on this site. We assumed all the trips would be vehicular in nature. So we used that data and conducted a capacity analysis at each of the four study intersections. So we compared our future baseline 2031 volumes with the combined or build-conditioned 31 volumes, 2031 volumes, with the residential traffic added. And what we determined were that each of the site driveways would operate at an efficient level of service, A, B, or C, in the peak hours. The intersection of Route 5 and Enfield Street at South currently operates efficiently at level of service B, and it will continue to do so in the future condition with the residential traffic added. So no decrease in level of service there. Also, we looked at queuing and the queue increases throughout the study network were negligible, averaging an increase of one vehicle length or less. Lastly, I just wanted to hit on our crash analysis. We looked at the latest three years of available crash data from the Yukon Crash Repository. This is a statewide standard for compilation and analysis of crash data. It's consistently used by the DOT. Basically, it's a compilation of all local and state police department crash data for all roads throughout Connecticut. So we looked at the latest three years of data on South and on Enfield Street, and there was no significant crash history that we identified. Also, no identifiable crash patterns at the study intersections that could be exacerbated by this development traffic. So just to recap, our conclusion of our traffic study was that the proposed residential housing units on the Felician Sisters' property will not significantly impact traffic operations in the study area and the additional traffic can be safely accommodated by the study intersections. One other thing I wanted to note is due to the number of units and the number of parking spaces on the site, if this were to be approved by the town, you would still have to go to the DOT, to OSTA, to the State Traffic Administration, for an administrative review. So they would have the opportunity to review this as well. So with that, I can take any questions now? Or we have any more? Sure, okay. Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much for that update.
Good evening. Bridgette Armstrong with the Felician Sisters. So just to kind of recap what hopefully--
Bridgette, could you speak up just a little?
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
The beautiful Felician Campus and two of its prominent buildings, the convent and St. Felix's, are operating at a capacity far lower than what they were designed for. Just as it would be difficult for an apartment building to operate and maintain an entire facility with 20% occupancy, the same is true for the Felician Sisters. They still need to heat and light 100% of the hallways and maintain 100% of the building conditions. And financially, that just doesn't make sense with 20% occupancy. So a path for reusing the space before they become even more vacant and underutilized for many more years is critical for the long-term preservation of the campus. And this is the reality of the situation. And there are very few options available to preserve the buildings and the campus. In good faith, the sisters and the community builders have made adjustments to the plan reflecting community input regarding density, green space, and views from Enfield Street. The sisters and the community builders share the appreciation for the historical district and have no desire to jeopardize its integrity. Even with the proposed zone change, our plan never showed changes or buildings on the parade grounds in front. In fact, the proposed zone change does not include or affect the parade grounds or the Orin Thompson Mansion. The sisters and the community builders have also proposed voluntary conditions that you'll hear about in a moment to be met as part of the zone change to address concerns expressed by a negative vocal minority that the Felicians would sell the property and then anything could be built on the property. So these conditions that we're proposing in a moment would limit what could be built on the campus in the future, regardless of the owner. The Felician Sisters have always lived their mission of being of service to the people around them, regardless of age, what they look like, how much money they make, or how the sisters may have been treated as a result of wanting to continue to give back to the community. For the sisters, the question is less about whether this commission approves the zone change. The question for them is what is God's will here? The sisters believe they have a good plan, one that preserves the history and beauty of the property and that would also continue their mission of being of service to the people around them. God's will is at the very deepest core of the Felician Sisters' calling and the reason they are who they are and what they do. The Felician Sisters, along with their partner and mission, the community builders, remain committed and determined to follow the road of God's will for us to be on. And we hope and pray you join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now Carl.
Sure. You wrapping up, Carl? Attorney Landelina, you wrapping up?
I've got about 10 minutes, I would say.
Okay.
So thank you again for the record, Carl Landelina. There's a few things. I basically want to take you through the regulation itself and make sure that, I believe, the record reflects that there's evidence that we provide it that gives this commission an opportunity to consider--
Mr. Chair.
Yep, sir.
The audience cannot hear. Somebody--
Oh, sorry. Okay.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
We didn't realize that the microphone was turned off. Thank you.
Okay, so--
Please start over again.
Sure, I was just going to say, I'd like to take us through the actual regulation itself. There are a number of specific criteria which have to be met. We believe that we've introduced evidence on each of those specific criteria that would give you, as I say, the opportunity to approve this request before you. So specifically, as you know, this is Section 5.6 or 60 of the regulations. And I'll just go through 560.1. Existing buildings must contain a gross floor area of 100,000 square feet or more. Clearly, we've met that by evidence. The buildings that exist within the zone change area are about 150,000 or 160,000 square feet. The proposed area contains a contiguous land area of five or more acres. The proposed area for the zone change now is 16 and 1/2 acres. This is, I guess, a critical one. Obviously, the buildings have a vacancy rate of 80% or more of the existing gross floor area for continuous period of 24 months or more immediately preceding the date of the application. We believe that we have, we comply with this regulation. Now, one of the things I always do when we have terms that are, you know, a little bit more complex than what we normally see is you go to the definitions in your regulations. Vacancy rate is not defined in your regulations. So there's no, I don't know what vacancy rate means in your mind based upon the fact that there's no definition. So the law says, well, then we go to the dictionary. There's no real definition, at least Webster's Dictionary, of the term vacancy rate. So then I went to the leading scholar in the state of Connecticut on zoning law, Dwight Merrim, and he has provided the only dictionary of construction and developmental, development terms in the state of Connecticut. Might be one of the only ones in the country. So I said, Dwight, what do you have in there for vacancy rate? And I provided this to staff. So when we're talking about vacancy rate, typically, it is the number of uninhabited dwelling units or percent of unoccupied, non-residential floor area that is available and suitable for occupancy, expressed as a percentage of the total number of dwelling units for residential use and the total floor area for non-residential use. So there's more information on this, two pages, which I provided to staff. I don't know if you've seen a copy of it. So in a residential context, vacancy rate is always, in every case, determined by a simple calculation of how many of the dwelling units are occupied versus how many there are. And in this case, we had 147 units or so, 146. There's 24 that are occupied. That's a vacancy rate of 84%. Now, to get into floor area, gross floor area is something you would typically do in a non-residential setting. So the language in your regulation, you know, has that sort of ambiguity in it, I'll call it. That's the term I would use. So, and I know this is probably weighing on your minds as well as some of the folks who are going to speak in about 10 minutes. If, otherwise, I mean, I don't know what your thoughts are on this, but if I have a broom in a broom closet-- a broom in a broom closet on the other wing, is that occupied space? If I've got old furniture being stored in the gym, is that occupied space? If I have-
Please. Thank you.
If I have shelves, old shelving that's currently residing, I shall say, within some hallway on the other wing, is that occupied space? I would say, in the context of this application, because it's a residential use, the standard for determining vacancy rate is a simple calculation of the number of available units versus those that are occupied, which I think gets us clearly below the 80% that we need to be at. And I can tell you that the current status of the number of units being resided in, all right, has been fairly constant, slightly going down, but, you know, for the last two years, it hasn't risen above. You know, it's always been declining. There have been no new novits that I'm aware of, or, you know, no new occupants. So the rate at the time we applied and for the last two years, we're submitting to you, has been below the 80%. And I guess we'll find out your opinion when you discuss this after the public hearing is closed. So D says substantial inability to develop the project under the provisions of any other zoning district. So most of you were here, some of you weren't. Remember that we've been at this for two years. We came to the commission and said, here are the options available to us within the context of your zoning regulations. The MFSD, the senior housing, all of them. We went through all of them, right? And not one of them would, under the current status of the language, would allow this project to proceed. And it was based upon that, that the, I guess, the consensus sort of was, and maybe that's a stronger word than others might use, was that applying for the SDD was the appropriate mechanism to make this project go forward. So E, the proposal will provide a substantial benefit to the town, all right, and the immediate neighborhood. So we have told you that this is a campus, you know, it's raised, it's peaked, and it's sliding down the other side of the mountain, so to speak, and that we feel the best way of ensuring that the buildings that are there, that you've seen on our master plan, will stay there for at least the next 100 years. That's the term of the lease between the Felician Sisters and the community builders. That's a great benefit. We've heard so many people say they love the campus. They don't want it to change, but they love the way it looks. You've seen what it's going to look like. I've driven by that so many times and I didn't even know it was there. And I grew up in Windsor Locks, and people would tell me they went to OLA, and I'd say, where is that? I mean, it's hard to see in the summertime. Yes, in the winter, it's different. But based upon where the additions in the buildings are going to go, it's not going to have any visual impact to the immediate area or to the town. So the benefit is, one, the buildings will stay as-is. They'll be renovated, they'll have a new life. If this isn't approved, I don't know what's going to happen there. They'll go with option D or E, and who knows? Also, this is going to turn, this property will turn from a non-taxable property into a taxable property. Obviously, that'll bring substantial benefit to this town. F, the proposal exhibits compatibility with the character and density of land use abutting the site. We discussed before that the word "character" now is a dirty word according to the legislature, but let's talk about density. The density here right now could be 146 plus 22 in the St. Francis House, 170 units, 170 units. That's what's there now. We're proposing a total of about 250. Also, we've got a higher density use to our immediate south, the skilled nursing facility. Yes, there are single-family and duplex uses around, but the character, and I'm going to use that dirty word, is not going to change because of the things we've already talked about. But it's not like we're proposing a solar farm, which I told you we could have, probably, or some other use. It's still a residential use in a residential neighborhood. And I don't know how the character of a residential neighborhood gets changed when you don't change the use. The proposal exhibits compatibility with zoning districts adjacent to the site. I think I've just covered that. The proposal is compatible with the Town Plan of Conservation Development, and I submitted to you on the first night, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, I think substantial evidence to support that, in fact, our proposal does. So I think that's pretty much it. Obviously, you have a couple of decisions to make along the way. One is what the density is going to be if you were to approve this. We're asking for, obviously, the density that would require is 15, it's higher than what's really was asked for initially, but we've taken 10 acres out of the site, so the math is still the same. We haven't changed the number of units. Now, in terms of what Ms. Armstrong mentioned, conditions, all right? And this is a legal question, and you can ask your town attorney, and you can do this after the public hearing is closed, because it's nothing that is not going to be on the record. So we don't have to wait for a town attorney opinion. But the applicant can voluntarily submit itself to certain conditions. Now, we've asked for a waiver of the site plan. What we've given you instead is this master plan, all right? And I'm sure you understand the reasons for that. I mean, the cost of doing a site, a full-blown site plan without knowing the density and whether we're going to get an approval is prohibitive. But we're saying, and we have been all along, that for purposes of this process, this master plan is our site plan, okay? And that we are going to do exactly what it says there and no more. So if you were to entertain an approval, we would certainly say that if you wanted to take this site plan and say, this is what's being approved. 120 units of senior housing in the convent building and in the St. Felix's building with an addition, and 109, I believe the number is, units of all ages housing in Buildings Two and Three to be constructed at some date in the future. And if you were to approve this as-is, I know your regulation would require that we would build out all of the senior housing first before we start construction of anything else. So, you know, I think that we're certainly willing to offer that. So the idea that somehow we're going to do a bait and switch on this community, which has been mentioned several times unfortunately, is not true. The people at this table are in it for the long haul. I'm just a hired guy. But they're in it for the long haul, and we think this is the best way of conserving what's there. And I will have a, I would like to reserve five minutes for rebuttal after you speak to the public.
Yep.
But I think that's all we have at this point, and thank you for your time.
Is there any questions for the applicants before they leave the table? Commissioner DeGray?
Yeah, I did have a couple of questions. You talked about some of the apartment complexes. You gave us several. How many of those do you manage? And are any of them in a historical district?
We do-
I know the Vernon one isn't, because I know exactly where it is.
Oh, I'm sorry, the ones that I showed you, the community builders comps?
Right.
Yeah, let me just get back to that. So these are all owned and managed by the community builders.
Okay.
I don't know that I included any historic ones in this one. None of these are historic buildings. We do have a number of historic buildings that we own and manage as well. I'd be happy to provide a list of those. We were just talking about this afternoon, one in New Haven called West Village, which is a former YMCA, and that's actually a partnership that we were brought on with the YMCA to redevelop that building. And so it's now both housing and also continues to be a YMCA, and it's a very large brick building. I'm also working on a development in New Haven right now that is in a historic district, a local historic district, and utilizes different SHIPO and National Park Service approvals to be able to do that work. So none of these examples that I used, I used ones that I thought were more comparable in terms of the demographics in the region. But I'm more than happy to provide a list to the commission.
No, I think you've provided more than enough paper for us. Another question is, you've given us the vacancy rate of two buildings, but you are fully occupied at the St. Francis House, and you utilize parts of that building, and then you use the school, yes?
Yeah, but they're not within the zone change area.
No, no. And I'm just asking.
Yeah.
Those are the questions I'm asking. And you're talking about adding driveways and the parking study. Was the park, did anyone look at the parking on a Sunday when the church is across the street is having service or having a wedding or special event? Because they're parking on South Road. And I've been over there recently to see the buildings, trying to figure out which ones were which on the property. And when I came out, somebody was parked on South Road, and I had a hard time getting out because of the way they were parked and the speed of the cars coming from Enfield Street down South Road. So I'm sure the traffic study doesn't take into account those things. So that is an issue that-
I'm sorry, can I just ask a clarifying question? Are you referring to services not on the campus, but at the congregational church next door?
Not on the campus, in the congregational church.
Right.
It's a very small parking lot.
Right.
It's a very historical church in this town.
Yeah.
And they do have events, and on Sundays, sometimes the church is full, and, you know, churches' numbers fluctuate. So-
And they park on South Road, is what you're saying?
They do park on South Road.
So we're not proposing any, all the parking for the campus would be contained on the campus?
But I'm talking about coming out. Did anybody look at that? When there's an event going on in the church?
You're asking about sidelines from our campus-
Right.
On a Sunday when people are parking? I don't-
I don't know if you did.
No. Because that's something that can be a big issue. If somebody's having a big wedding, people trying to get in and out, they're going to park on both sides of South Road.
Well, those are off-site conditions that we have no control over.
I understand.
Yeah.
But we're talking, you're talking about adding, like, 200 more units.
Mm-hmm.
So you're talking more people coming in and out of your property onto a road that may have site problems coming-
For a couple hours a week, is that what you're?
Couple hours a week, depending on what's going on.
One thing, can I just point out a couple of things about the plan? Because I think that's a really, it's helpful, because we did actually think a lot about the uses of coming in and out of the site. And so you'll see, what we're proposing are these three curb cuts, two of which are already there, and then propose a third.
Right, and there's a slight hill there.
Sure. So, yes, understood. So I just want to point out sort of where the curb cuts are and the uses that would use it.
I know where the curb cuts are. I've been in all of them.
Oh, I know. I'm trying to talk about what the proposed uses would be when this is done. So, and this just might be helpful for the public to understand as well. So if you see this first curb cut here, which is closest to the congregational church, is for the school only. So on Sunday, there's no school service that would be coming in and out of this area. The next curb cut, which is further up South Road, further from the congregational church, this is for the senior housing.
Excuse me, I don't want to interrupt you, but that's the one that I came out of.
Yeah, this one right here.
And somebody was parked, like, right where that parking lot is.
Oh, this middle one, right here.
Right? And in between the school entrance that you have and that middle one, in the middle of that somewhere, I don't know exactly, but when I was trying to get out, it was difficult.
Yeah.
Because of the car parked, the speed of the vehicles coming, because they can gather up quite a bit of speed from Enfield Street to that second entrance.
Yeah. And so just to clarify, though, that this would just be for the senior unit. So this wouldn't be 200 apartments that are using this drive? So your point is absolutely a well-taken point, and I just wanted to clarify, it's not the whole apartment complex that would be able to use this. It's split up so that only sort of the family housing unit that we're proposing in the back would be coming out only from this curb cut here. So again, you know-
More speed.
To your, well, I was going to say, in terms of sightlines. I think that it's not all 200 people trying to come out on a Sunday from the campus.
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that that can be a big issue here.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Holinsky?
I'm very concerned about the backup of traffic on the South Road-Enfield Street intersection during peak periods. And I know your numbers, the gentleman's numbers, show that it's not a huge impact. However, I myself periodically drive through that area during peak periods. And I'll tell you, it's backed up on South Road quite a bit. And it takes a while to get out through that light, okay? Now, it's possible maybe the light could be changed or something like that by the state, but right now, if you're going to dump another 50 cars in there in the morning or plus, you know, it's going to be even worse. I mean, what is, I don't know what your calculation is per car. Is it 10 feet per car, or is it, you know?
Yeah, it's about 20, 20 feet, we consider, for a vehicle queue length.
Yeah, okay.
And as I mentioned, the level of service at that intersection is a B, so it is operating efficiently in the peak hours. Our development traffic did not decrease that level of service. And typically, the DOT considers level of service A through D as being acceptable. So this is, this is on the efficient end of the scale at a B. And the queue increases average less than 25 feet on those approach lanes, as far as when you add our development traffic to it. So it's a pretty negligible queue increase. The queues did not overspill the storage for the turn lanes that are provided there during those peak periods that we analyzed.
Okay. Per the analysis?
Per the analysis and our field observations as well.
Have you done any physical observations during those times?
Yes. So when we were out there, they, you know, that, we always calibrate our analysis when we do our field visits, and-
Yeah, sure.
We did, we did, did not see anything that was inconsistent with what we're coming up with with our synchroanalysis.
So the average backup is a couple hundred feet? I think it was, I think it was higher during the evening commute.
Yeah, I don't want to miss quote, so I'm going to refer to the queue table here.
Do I remember, like, 250 to 400 or something like that?
Yeah. Um, yeah, so on the northbound approach to the intersection, the through lane was about 215 feet was the queue on the northbound through lane. The southbound was 140 feet, and the left turn, southbound left turn lane was about 45 feet.
Okay. The concern I would have is the, is the-
This is the morning peak hour.
Westbound entrance of South Road into Route 5.
Okay, you're looking at the afternoon peak hour, the 400?
Morning and afternoon.
Yeah. So, and then the afternoon, the 400 was on the northbound approach.
Right.
And we increased that to 425. So that's one B of the line.
Because you've got, you've got two schools there where people are, well, three schools if you count Montessori as well. People are dropping people, kids off and all that. And it queues up quite a bit, but, so it's an inconvenience that I think is going to be increased with this addition of more traffic caused by the development of the buildings.
I just, I want to note one other thing there. You know, the number of vehicles in that intersection in the afternoon peak hour, and I'm just doing this eyeballing it, but it's roughly 1,000 vehicles going through that intersection. And what we're adding in the afternoon peak hour to that intersection is a 36, it's about 60 vehicles. So, you know, you can do the percentage, but it's a very small increase. That increase is a typical background growth rate that we would see in an intersection from year to year, you know, if there weren't any development in the area. So it's not significant, and that's why we look at levels of service when we do this analysis. We look at what it is now, we add the traffic, and then we go- We look at what it is now, we add the traffic, and then we get the build condition level of service.
Sure.
And as I said, it's, it's operating efficiently by DOT standard, and we're not decreasing it with the additional traffic.
Okay, thank you.
If I can. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Martinar?
Yes, I do. Find me.
Yes. By all means.
Well, continuing on the traffic part of it, the two entrances from South Road, one closer to I-91 and the next one, they're both dedicated to the new development that you're proposing.
That's correct, yeah.
You also have access to a, another property, access to Post Office Road. Is there some kind of agreement that may be out there or will be there between the two properties so that you may be able to reduce some of the traffic impact on South Road and move some of the traffic the other way? That's more a question of, I'm not, look...
I can actually answer this, because we've had a lot of conversations with the Little Sisters of the Poor that, that own that property that's just to the south of the Felician Sisters campus. And it's actually a real problem right now. People are cutting through Post Office Road, cutting through to get to South Road. And so they're cutting through their property, they're cutting through the Felician property. And so what we're proposing in this plan and have been in conversations with the fire department on, during the ART meetings, is, is preventing that pass-through. So if you look at the roadway structures, there is an emergency exit that will be required for emergency access of vehicles. But the goal is to, to basically cut off that cut-through. So it's, it's really designed to prevent people from speeding through the property, make sure that the Little Sisters of the Poor campus is feeling more, more traffic calming and is safer, as well as making sure we're doing that through there. So that's sort of outside of the particular traffic study scope, but that's the agreement that's, that we've been working through with the Sisters, Little Sisters of the Poor.
Right. I'm not trying to be laborious point anymore, but what I'm trying to say is some of the parking lots, areas could be reconfigured so that people don't have direct access from South Road to Post Office Road directly. And there may be some signage and whatever association of the tenants that say, hey, you shall go left and you shall go right or whatever.
Yeah, absolutely. That's the same goal that we have.
That might help. So that was one. The second I had was between the parking lots where it says 38 and 18 behind the letter 3, building in the back. And there is a cul-de-sac that's right behind St. Francis House. So will there be connectivity between the two that may help? Again, your internal traffic flow, and that may impact either way, Post Office Road versus...
Yeah. So what we were trying to do with this particular plan was to, to not create sort of cut-throughs even on the campus too. So the, the way that we've designed it right now, and you know, again, this, you know, could be something for feedback, but was that this curb cut here, this middle curb cut would take you to the senior housing complexes, the St. Francis Residence, which would have its own parking, the St. Felix Center Residence, which would have its own parking. And the flow of traffic really sort of funnels through there. It doesn't create a ring road. There are sort of walking paths and sidewalks that are meant to connect the different parts of the campus. But for vehicle connectivity, we thought it was better for traffic calming purposes to not allow people to, to cut all the way through. And again, this is that sort of emergency access we mentioned, where trying to cut off that connection between Post Office Road and for the South Road.
Okay. And the last comment I have, it's more a comment than anything else. Somebody mentioned voluntary conditions by the applicant. Most of the time, the commission is more concerned with zone change issues where the subsequent development may not completely conform or be in line with the master plan or concept that was proposed at the zone change application. So my suggestion was, would you be proposing some kind of voluntary conditions that may address this kind of issues?
Yeah, what we're proposing is that what you see before you as the master plan, that our site plans would substantially conform to what's there. And that the number of units that we would propose to build would be the number that's shown on that plan, no, no more than those. That would be the top number. And that they would be divided essentially as shown on the plan also, that 50 senior housing units would be built in Phase 1 as part of the renovations in addition to the St. Felix House, which is number 1 on your, on your map up there, right?
Senior housing, 50 units.
And at the next phase, if you approve it as, would be building number...
Seven.
Seven, the convent, which would be 70 units of senior housing.
Right.
And until those two are completed, under the terms of your own regulations, we could not work on Buildings 2 and 3 in the back until those phases were completed. And we're, we're telling you that, yes, that is, we would willingly submit ourselves to the condition that our site plans and phases would conform to that master plan and what I just described to you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions for now? Seeing none, I think we're going to pass for a minute. We're going to open up for the public to speak. Before we start allowing the public to speak, I do want to emphasize and personally ask that, please, if you're going to come up and speak, let's not be repetitious. We have heard from all of you twice already. We have your comments, we have the minutes, everyone here has heard all your comments. If you have something new to add, please feel free to come up. If you haven't spoken before, please feel free to come up. But if you're going to come up and start repeating what you've already said once or twice before, I'm going to ask you, please don't do that. It's getting late, we have a lot of business to do, and I'll use the gavel if I have to. So having said that, do we have a sign-up sheet? Lori? All right. Thank you so much.
There's only one name out.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you for getting up and doing that.
No problem.
Okay, again, I see a lot of familiar names here, which I love to hear from you guys, but please, if you're going to be repetitious, I'm going to ask you to stop. So the first person up here is Nikki Price, and I will use the gavel.
Sure, go ahead. It's all right, no problem.
Good evening, Nikki Price, 1324 Enfield Street. As I begin my remarks, I would like to impart upon this commission a civics lesson that I learned in school some years ago. That being, we are a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. That government officials show no favoritism to one side or any special interest group.
Nikki, that really has nothing to do with the, with the, I appreciate your comments, and I know where you're going, and I'm not going to disagree with you, but it has nothing to do with this application.
Okay. Unfortunately, during the PH 3040 MA petition process, the applicant representative and town staff have continually sidestepped zoning regulations, thwarting efforts of true abutters seeking to halt the creation of a special development district, SDD, by coming up with crafty methods for this governing body to pass a zone change that will be permanently part of the land parcel, such as a waiver to the mandatory requirement of a site plan. How can this governing body, in good conscience, make a comprehensive decision without a site plan? It is a site plan that would expose the impact this massive redevelopment project will have on the community. A good site plan will include construction limits, lay-down areas, density, existing and proposed conditions of buildings, distance between buildings, easements, roads, sidewalks, the flow of traffic and lights or stop signs, path, trails, parking, drainage facilities, sanitary, sanitary service lines, water lines, fire hydrants, lighting, landscape, environment, and etc. Let's turn our attention to the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission Staff Report and Draft Resolution Number 3. I would like to focus on four areas. One, petition. In an attempt to willfully circumvent the process and obtain approval of the petition, the applicant representative and town staff have created a new zone change area, thus eliminating, eliminating the property boundary of taxpayers, homeowners in front of the Felician Sisters on Enfield Street, and added I-91 as a butter to the property. Of course, this would not meet the supermajority needed. So what is being asked by the applicant's representative and town staff is for this governing body to find I-91 is more important in the new zone change than the Enfield Street taxpayers, homeowners who live directly in front of the Felician Sisters. Two, site plan requirements requested to be waived. What is the applicant representative and town staff is asking this governing body to do is to put the cart before the horse. Vote no and keep the site plan before the waiver, as should be. It's the applicant's burden to provide a site plan. By having all the facts in front of the commission that a site plan provides will determine if this project benefits the town of Enfield as a whole or not. We, all of us, would not be in this situation if the applicant, the applicant representatives and town staff were not devious in their actions to impede legitimate zoning regulations. Three, vacancy. The applicant is seeking clarification from this commission. The commission shouldn't refer the applicant to zoning regulations, Page 12, Section 2.20, interpretation of other terms, Item 2, Webster's Ninth Collegiate Dictionary, for the definition of vacancy, which provides a clear-cut clarification to the meaning of vacancy. Attached, which I will give to the staff, is the regulation in Webster's definition of vacancy. It is common knowledge, these buildings are not vacant because a chaplain lives in the yellow house, the school uses the auditorium for their gym classes, the infirmary has two floors, the nuns are living in the buildings, apartment dwellers living in the buildings, kitchen and dining rooms are open every day for three meals a day, which the nuns and dwellers have access. Clearly, there is daily activities in these buildings, and to say otherwise is not true.
Excuse me, Nikki, your five minutes is up. Are you almost done?
I'm almost done. I've just got one more thing to do, because it's very important about your straw poll.
Real quick, go ahead.
Okay. Four...
I'll let you come back a second time if you need to.
No, I just want to do this straw poll, because it's very important, and then I can come back afterwards. The straw poll vote definition. A straw poll, straw vote, or straw ballot is an ad hoc or unofficial vote. It is used to show the popular opinion on a certain matter and can be used to help politicians know the majority opinion and help them decide what to say in order to gain votes. However, in meetings subject to Robert's Rules of Orders, as your meeting is, motions to take straw polls are not allowed. Thus, it must be an official vote to ascertain if the commission is in favor to such a waiver. Now, what I did was, I copied your bylaws to cite the Robert's Rule of Orders, and I'm going to give everything to the staff. I just want to say, lastly, there are too many unanswered questions to grant the applicant their request for approval for a zone change and site plan waiver. The fair, just action would be to continue the public hearing and direct the applicant to submit a full site plan for review. Okay. All right. And the only thing I'm going to do is I'm going to add my op-ed that I submitted and was published in the Enfield Patch in the General Enquirer to the record.
Thank you, thank you very much. I have a name here, but I believe that was in my, A.J. Crane, I think that was for a prior...
I'm sorry?
No, I'm talking to the audience, see if A.J. Crane is here. I believe he already left. James Galista?
Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. How long do I have? Five minutes?
Five minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
And you haven't, you haven't been here before, right, James?
I have, but I got a little different...
That's maybe a lot different, please.
Okay.
Not just a little.
Actually, she covered several of the items that I wanted to. Anyway, unfortunately, I was hoping that the lady representing the Sisters was going to say that she was going to include in the lease something that said there were no use other than residential use in, in the, during the course of the lease. I did not hear her say that, though. So this SDD district covers several other things. First, the definition of the SDD was to reuse of underutilized vacant buildings. I have no problem with the buildings that are existing. I'm, I'm sure that there is a lot of vacancies in there, but I don't think it was designed to add to. I think the first people that imagined this district were going to just, they saw an old factory building, what can we do with it? Bigelow, they actually tore buildings down. The buildings that they added were accessory buildings and not extra residential buildings. Let's see. Then, we're, Section 5.6 D, F, and G. Okay, that no new buildings until, until existing structures have been fully rehabilitated and COs have been issued. So that means Building 1 apparently has to be finished or, and then, that has to be completely occupied then, and have COs. Then they go to the convent building. Then after that is finished with COs and completely occupied, they go to Building 3 and then, or 2, and then Building 3. That means there's going to be construction going on there for years, it looks like, if that's the procedure. I could be wrong. If I'm totally wrong on something, please stop me, because I don't want to make a stupid mistake. But that's the way I picture it. I also have the comment on the, the signatures. And the unfortunate thing is it's, as she said, this is surrounded on three sides by state and town property. And that excludes several, many families and that are more directly affected than people on the other side, on the east side of I-91. And when you're voting, it says, one of the parts of the special requirements for special development district, Section 5.60 D, oh, proposal will provide substantial benefit to the town and the immediate neighborhood. The proposal exhibits compatibility with the character and density and use abutting the site. And G, the proposal exhibits compatibility with zoning districts adjacent to the site. Unfortunately, those people most affected have no chance, there's, legally, their signatures on a petition is, has no value. I mentioned before, and I'm, I think it's a big concern, is the water issue. On the Felician Sisters bulk data chart, I was looking at areas, and there's thousands of square feet of impermeable surfaces, rooftops, I think, and parking areas. I think my parking area figures are wrong, but it looks like there's going to be in excess of an acre of impermeable area, and there's no place on the other side of... I think my parking area figures are wrong, but it looks like there's going to be in excess of an acre of impermeable area, and there's no place on the other side of I-91 for that water to go. It's a mess there. There's also already a water problem on that side. There's a water problem between this property and Post Office Road. I know there's a wetlands agency. I don't know what they can do about it if it's approved, if this zoning change is approved. I don't know how they can ever deal with where all the extra water is going to go. I think that'll do it. I think other people have.
Thank you.
Okay. But the big thing is, when you're voting, I want you to remember that those items about, it's kind of like conscience be your guide. I know that's not a legal term, but when you're faced with something like this, especially whether it conforms to the adjacent properties and the way the community is laid out, I think that should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Galista. Mr. McDonald?
It's below.
He left?
Rita Crowley, 53 Edgewood Drive. I've never spoken before, so please bear with me, okay?
Certainly.
If I bore you, just hit the gap.
No, that's okay.
Okay. So I have a different take, I guess, on this. So I don't come here to talk about zoning regulations or historic districts or traffic, but I am in support for the development of 100% elderly housing as proposed by the Felicians. So I just want to give you a little background. In 2009, my mother-in-law, who was a lifelong resident of Enfield, she was 90 years old at the time. She was healthy, but maintenance of her home became a burden. We started checking into alternative living arrangements and attended the St. Francis residence weekend open house. We took the tour and immediately felt we had found the ideal situation for her to spend her remaining years. Why was it an ideal setting? Affordable rent, security, beautiful surroundings, access to the chapel, but most important that she'd be able to continue to live by her family here in town. I know of no other elderly housing complex here in town that can offer what St. Francis residence offers. The sisters care deeply about each and every resident, and I can testify to that firsthand. They have a proven track record, as evidenced by their superior management of the complex over the last 13 years. They offer a safe, secure environment for the elderly residents, and to me, this is a prime example of their foresight into the preservation of and the optimal use of the existing buildings. So my question is this: Where will our elderly population go to find housing when they need it? They will be in the sunset of their lives without viable options to stay close to their family and friends, as Enfield currently has little in the way of housing to meet the needs of the aging seniors. I recently followed an Enfield dial-a-ride bus on the road last week, and on the back of the bus was the logo, "Seniors are our heroes." I thought that was very poignant, considering this discussion. Are they? So I think, as a town, do we really care about our seniors and housing for the elderly population? If so, I find the logo, based upon the conversations here, a little bit hypocritical if the committee does not approve the Felician's proposal. If it's approved, it could be a win-win for all. A project like this has the potential benefit to a large number of Enfield elderly who will eventually be downsizing from their single-family homes but don't want to move away from their family and friends. So I think then, on the other side, what if the proposal is not approved? What happens then? The ramifications of such a decision should be a grave concern to members of this committee and Enfield residents, as the Felicians do have the option, as I said before, their representatives, to sell the property if they choose to. They would have the revenue and they would move on and it would be sold. But that is not an option they have yet chosen to do or what they originally intended. So in conclusion, I would ask, will this committee look back upon its decision with a sense of gratification and pride or maybe some regret and remorse? Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Patrick Thibodeau, 20 Cora Street. This is the first time I've spoken, although I have sent you a letter, and I'll try to keep it original. I just want to address a couple lingering issues. Early on in the debate, I feel like the debate has changed to a discussion around technicalities at this point, but I think when you start getting into the fulsome discussion, you're going to look at the broader issues. And one of the broader issues was the cost, you know, to the town. And just to point that, I'm a graduate of 1968 St. Bernard School, and in that particular period in the 60s, the town for a period was literally building one elementary school per year in this town because the population growth was just enormous. And the Catholic schools and the sisters who taught at these elementary schools actually saved this town millions of dollars, and over the decades, millions and millions of dollars in inflation-adjusted money. And so I think, you know, this has been a very wonderful thing for our community, both in a cost-wise and both in a social and societal-wise. So just to clarify that point, this project adds maybe, what, they said 20 school kids? That has no impact on our town. I read the Gorman-York report, and it's pretty troubling, and I'm sure you all read it, so I won't get into detail, but, you know, Enfield's losing population, we're losing school kids, the spine power of our town is declining, and they say quite frankly, we're in economic decline, and we need multifamily housing, which is more in demand than single-family housing. They make that point fairly clear in that thing. And I think when you think about the big picture, this project actually fits pretty well in what the kind of thing that we need. On the affordable housing, some people have cited like the 12% figure, and that's correct. The figures that people have cited, the opponents, are correct. I'm not going to dispute them at all. But I would also say that we're not obligated to any kind of a limit. But then again, when you read the Gorman-York report, their 1921 study, they say quite clearly, "Enfield suffers from a lack of affordable housing," and they do a pretty extensive calculation, and, you know, a lot of it is malleable. So I think, you know, when you look at the affordable housing issue, that's really not a reason to reject this at all. And who does this help? I mean, they have a $40,000 limit on this, and this is really aimed at, this is really aimed at people who don't get government help. They don't get government help, but they have jobs and they have rents where they are really squeezed, and they're going to have trouble saving for a down payment for a house in this town, and, you know, they're going to have trouble saving for college or paying for college or all kinds of stuff. So this is really aimed at people who are striving to make better in their life and really improve their lives. So I don't, you know, this is a wonderful thing that we would be doing for that particular segment. It's not that many people when you get down to it because over half of the property is for seniors, and we need the senior. I agree with the woman who just spoke, we do need more senior housing, but we also need this housing that's aimed at this particular group, people who want to make a life in Enfield. When my father moved here and my mother moved here in 1959, my father was a factory worker. My mother didn't work, but my father could buy a Ledger Star house on a factory wage. You can't do that anymore. It's so complicated and it's so expensive, you just can't do it. And so we need solutions like this. We just need them today, and it should be plain. So when you think about the technical issues, I mean, people want you to talk about the vacancy rate, they want you to talk about some inconvenience in the traffic. Tell me about inconvenience in the traffic. I live off Raffia Road. Play Cora and Dale, just three streets generate more traffic than this thing ever will. And Raffia is so narrow, we back up every time a UPS truck and a fuel oil truck and ambulance, anything ends on the streets, just back up all the time. We live with it. We survive. It's no big deal. Those poor people who live off Hazard Avenue when they built the Costco, Home Depot, and boy, everybody started flowing down Hazard Avenue, that's a freaking nightmare now. But, you know, they live with it. We all live with a little inconvenience, you know? We just do, and that's the way it is. But we live with the inconvenience to have the greater good, to have a good town, and that's what we want, and this is what this gives us, you know? So I don't see that. And the site, this has been covered. I mean, a lot of people have spoken, you know it. This thing has no impact on this historic district, none, no impact on anything, okay? I see I'm running out of time here.
Yeah, I'm sorry. If you can come back a second time if you like, since you haven't spoken before.
All right, I'll do that then. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Ann Marie Galdenzi, 13.
Ann Marie, before we start, I know you've been up here every time we've had, so something new?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
It is, but it's all tied together. There are a few sentences here that you might consider repeated, but that's not the main purpose of my conversation here. I'll try to edit it as I'm speaking.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you so much.
Sure. Ann Marie Galdenzi, 1330 Enfield Street. Thank you for this time to speak to you again. In reviewing some of the new documents posted, there is one called the Bulk Data Chart. I'm not sure who posted it, as it is not marked. This chart shows there are 142 dwelling units already existing on the Felician sisters' site. This was also mentioned in the last meeting by Attorney Landelini and this evening, too. What was not clarified is that these 142 dwellings are small dormitory-style units for single-bed, single persons. They are used for sisters, infirmary patients, and other current occupants to reside. These 142 units should not be considered or compared to a one- or two-bedroom apartment. This gives the incorrect perception that is not as many new apartments will be built. I find this a bit deceptive. It is more accurate to describe the 142 units as a boarding house, as they do not have private facilities in the way that an apartment or a hotel would be required. Therefore, there are not 142 dwelling units that exist, there are 142 bedrooms. In referring back to the Bulk Data Chart, under density, the existing density is listed as 142 dwelling units. Proposed density is 250 dwelling units, or I thought I heard a different number, 250, 230, so it's around that range. The units making seem that there is only an increase of 108 dwelling units. Again, this is a bit misleading for me because 142 single bedrooms take up much less square footage than 142 dwelling units. I propose the number of dwelling units will take up a much larger portion or space of the Felician sisters' property. This is a huge change in impact to the area. Under the building coverage, it lists the existing building coverage is 1.97 acres. The proposed increase in coverage states the total will only be 2.19 acres. This seems to be a very small increase, considering the proposal is to include two new buildings and a major addition. We do not have a clear, concise plan, I feel, for the project. For example, we have never, I'm trying to edit my own writing here, so I don't repeat myself, since, we had never had or heard from the fire department's report, so I called the fire department and I talked with the fire marshal, and he does remember reviewing the presented master plan for this project. His comment was that the material that was presented to him this past summer could not be approved. This is a big concern and provides a good reason why there is need for a concise master site plan. I wasn't sure what to call it, site plan, master plan. It also brings up a concern about other items that would have to be addressed in the report, such as the wetlands committee review, the police department review, the public works department, with an estimate demand on current, the demand on current utilities in the area. Example, the Water Pollution Control Authority impact, has it been submitted? I referenced that from the Enfield Zoning Regulation, number 13, 4.30.2, conversion of buildings for residential purposes. The Water Pollution Control Authority must be consulted on all proposed multifamily residential uses. I will try to edit this a little bit, but I wanted to touch about traffic, and one of the things was, was that some of the data that has been used is from 2016, and I find it interesting that that was good enough to compare for information in traffic that's happening today when there's been a lot of changes. So I live on the street, and so I can tell you actually what it's like to pull out of your driveway at the height of those times, and it's extremely difficult. I'll just be very frank. It's extremely difficult.
Ann Marie, your five minutes is up.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mary Ellen? And I don't have to repeat myself again, right? Thank you.
And I won't repeat myself.
Thank you very much.
I am going to go over more technical calculations, so I do have copies for the board members if you'd like to follow along with me. There's one for you.
Is that something you'd like us to have?
Yes. I have copies. I was told I couldn't directly hand them to you.
Yeah, you shouldn't, yeah. Staff will give them to us.
That's a lot of paper.
It's a lot of calculations.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you for getting up. Believe me, with this application, we have a lot of paper. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Mary Ellen.
Mary Ellen Deluzio, 1330 Enfield Street. I marked one of the pages I wrote from with a question mark. This should have been in your packet. The information wasn't sourced. I don't know where it came from, but this is where some of the calculations on the butters came from. I'd like to address then to this first page that I redid, the total of butter within the boundaries, the total area square foot, and the total acreage, and there it lists all the properties that are butters. And basically, what it comes down to is 31.66 acres is a listing of the, is 100% acres of the butters. That's what the total acre number is. Then if you look in the second section, there is butters within the boundary, and there's area and square feet, and then there's area and acres, and underneath I put the petitions of signatures as of September 8, '22, because once we found out other information, it should be this page where I retyped things and showed my calculations. So there are now, I believe, nine butters who have signed the petition, and that was submitted today. So the total area of, oh, one thing I did calculate, on the 31.66, representing 100% of the area of butters, 3.166 acres, 20% of that is 6.332 acres needed to meet the 20% of butter boundary. When you look at the new calculations with the additional butters, the area of acres is now 7.1... Therefore, we meet the 20% of abutters registration. If you look at the back of the page, there's additional calculations on the plan that was submitted to your packets. I'm talking about this area right here, percent of 500 boundary area. I looked at those numbers, and I was like, how the heck are they coming up with these numbers? So to the back of my page, submitted calculations, no source or date stamp, percent of 500 boundary area calculation. So they show the person who had .52% as a signer, I mean, he had .41 acres, and they calculated that as only .52% of them being a part of the abutters. The way they reached that number is they took the .41 acres that is in the abutter calculation, divided it by the total number of the entire project, the 78.83. That's their number, that's at the top of that page. The percentage of that they come up with is .52%. And they use that same calculation for every abutter. And they claim, therefore, only 3.82% of the abutters has signed the petition. This calculation is completely illegitimate, and let me explain why, if you read on. As stated above, 31.66 is the total number of acres of the abutters. Therefore, using their calculation, 3.166 divided by 78.3 times 100 is 40.16%.
Okay, so we get, I'm going to enter seat if I can. We get your message here. So what I'm going to do is, you have this, staff has this, so you're going to submit it to staff, staff's going to go back to legal department, they're going to check this stuff out, okay?
It needs to be checked out.
So we can.
You can't have something that doesn't equal 100%.
Sure, totally understand. So staff has it, staff's going to go back with the legal department and check this out, okay?
Okay. And then, there's one other calculation error.
I don't think we need to go, we get it, unless you want to talk with staff directly afterwards.
All right, I will trust that you guys, but in light of this, I would like to suggest that an independent assessment of these calculations by an unbiased party needs to be done. I don't know where these numbers came from. They're wrong, and they're mistakes, and they weren't done right. I also feel that someone independent has to make an assessment on the occupancy over there, because there's a few things that weren't mentioned, and, you know, for example, in the convent, there's two floors of an infirmary. They take in retired and lay people there. It's not unoccupied, I have other examples. I'll come back if.
I think we understand.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you.
We get the message loud and clear.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. Not to cut you off, but I think we get the message. Tess Crisitelli?
My name is Teresa Crisitelli, and I live at 1336 Enfield Street. I'm not going to talk about reasons why the zone change should not happen, because my neighbors and friends have done the research and eloquently presented those reasons. What I ask of you is to look at this little band of citizens who live in the historic district. Really look at them. Do you see fear and sadness in knowing if you vote for the zone change, the historic district will be forever changed? We who live on South Road, Enfield Street, and Post Office Road are well aware that our area has more traffic than other neighborhoods. We accept this because of our love of antique homes and the character and charm of the historic district. We do not need the increase in traffic if the zone change is approved. Because of a line drawn on the project, we are now non-abutters, as if we don't matter. We know we are abutters, and we do matter. My husband and I bought an antique home that was in much need of repair and love. We have been working on our property to make it an asset not only to the historic district, but to the town of Enfield. We are just a group of residents who do not have the deep pockets of community builders to hire an attorney to represent us. All research has been done by us and presented by us. Many of us are not comfortable speaking in public, but we have stepped up because we matter and our voices must be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Lori?
Totally new. Actually, all three of them are new.
Okay.
I also have copies for this down, put at the back of the desk. And a copy for all of the numbers, okay? Because mine is also technical.
Thank you. Yeah, we should get up and stretch.
There was a paper posted online on Tuesday morning. Actually, I would like to note that nothing was posted for the public hearing until Tuesday, which I found troubling, as it was all turned in on Friday, or before Friday. It's called "The Proposed Zone Change." The document was already mentioned, it's not sourced, it's not stamped in, so none of us know where or how it was created, or where it came from. And I have an attachment, because mine is all written on. There are notable errors on it, and one of the errors is the top calculation of the errors. And the second one is, the Little Sisters of the Poor property is listed on the town site to be 26.93 acres. But just by looking at the map supplied by Fussin' O'Neill, you can tell it's less than half the size of the Felician Sisters property, and we know that property is 26.82. So they're actually saying that the Little Sisters is larger, but we all know it's half the size. The Little Sisters is half the size, but it doesn't make sense. Having, mapping software myself, as an appraiser, I calculated the lot at 12.76 acres. I've attached the documents for reference, and I did want to note that whoever did the sheet, that's not sourced, that they do have it accurate on the lower part of the thing, under the 1364, where it says total of abutters within the boundary. That calculation is actually correct. So they didn't change it on the top. Because of this, anyone doing an area calculation is going to be off by 14.17 acres, which will then make all of the other calculations off. The boundary area listed is 78 minus the 14 really comes out to 64.66, according to the numbers on the sheet. Okay. Now, to calculate for the petition under 8.3, I'm using A. I'm not using B, as portrayed in the legal opinion. And if everybody realizes, he specifically says B is what he was giving the legal opinion on, not A. Which is signed by the owners of 20% more of the area of the lots included in the zone change. I use my calculation based on the abutters list provided in the document, the actual assessor cards acreage, with the change on the 1365 Enfield Street, because we know the property is not 26.93 acres, but actually 12.76 acres, based on the mapping software and the map Fussin' O'Neill provided. The total area of lots is 65.52 acres. 65.52 times the 20% is 13.10. Total acres need to qualify for the 20% in the statute. We had nine qualifying petition signers. They had a total area of the lots. Now, we're not talking about within the boundary, we're talking the area of the lots. That's 24.45 acres. That's over 37% of the area, well beyond the 20% that is needed. Even if the error was left on 1365 Enfield Street, the petition would still exceed the acreage needed. The provisions of the statute must be construed in a way to afford just protection to the threatened rights of individual property owners, as well to further public interest. The zoning board, the zoning board, has the authority to determine the validity of a protest petition. Enfield has no written guidelines. I think it's wrong to be putting up barriers and literally changing the zone line just to remove all the residents on Enfield Street. This should be the boundary line. And if they were going to use the zone line in one instance, well, in Enfield, that zone boundary line is the middle of the street. All this is done in the middle of a public hearing. Past precedents of how petitions were handled should have been followed here. Love's Travel Stops, The Villages, are the two public hearings that I remember. Without guidelines, who knows what to do? Some towns say not to count anything but privately-owned properties. This application has a church, schools, and a fire station. I don't think that they should be counted in the calculations. Some towns say just get 1,000 signatures, 100 signatures, 500 signatures. This has been a moving target, and the questions are endless. But nevertheless, based upon what we have in signature on the petition, we comply with the 20%, using the area of lots and the formula that you can actually read above. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Thank you, Lori. We have that, staff has that also. I'll ask her a question. Mr. Spazarini, would you like to speak?
Yes.
I know you've been up before, so I'm taking this to be something new?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'd like to get up and stretch.
Good evening, everyone. Anthony Spazarini, 40, Post Office Road, Enfield, Connecticut. The financial income from just the land lease would be substantially more than the local sisters would need to subsidize them, meaning that the vast amount of income from the land lease will be sent off to Chicago. It is clearly not a local endeavor. However, the greatest financial gain is for community builders. I would like to mention that Connecticut case law states that changing a zone has to be for the good of the community and not for an individual or particular group. Tonight, I will introduce everyone to community builders. It is a $2.5 billion enterprise with properties in 10 states with between 500 to 1,000 employees. The CEO of this nonprofit company has paid hundreds of thousands of dollars each year, plus many other benefits. Since they hired a prominent attorney and engineers, they certainly could have afforded to comply with the site plan requirements. This moneymaker is for the benefit of community builders. It is not a benefit for our town and the immediate neighborhood. Thank you, and good evening.
Thank you. Donna Dubinowski?
Also new. I promise, not going to be pro.
You say I remember the people who spoke before, so.
I promise, all new.
Okay, no problem.
Donna Dubinowski, 23, Betty Road. And let me start with just a couple of definitions regarding the terms residential dwelling, dwelling unit, and dormitory. Residential dwelling means a building occupied or capable of being occupied as a home, residence, or sleeping place by one or more persons, containing one or more dwelling units, but not including motels, hotels, boarding, lodging, or rooming houses. Dwelling unit is defined as one or more units, including kitchen, designed as a unit for occupancy by one family for the purpose of cooking, living, and sleeping. Dormitory, a residence hall consisting of rooms for sleeping for individuals or for groups usually without private baths. Now, the existing 142 dwelling units at Felician Sisters Bulk Data Chart rate, the one they're using, there are no private baths or kitchens of those existing 142 units. They are sleeping areas, or better fitting the definition of dormitory, versus residential dwelling units or a dwelling unit. The staff report of 9/8, the Regulation 5-6D-1-C states, "The buildings have a vacancy rate of 80% or more of the existing gross floor area for a contentious period of 24 months or more immediately preceding the date of the application. Staff has maintained that this interpretation is clear and encompasses the entire interior of buildings regardless of the use." The applicant is questioning this because they know they don't meet the vacancy regulation. Their belief is that vacancy may be interpreted as a vacancy rate of beds, bedrooms, dwelling units, such as with a hotel. We've already stated, doesn't work with hotels. The applicant is seeking clarification from the commission whether or not their interpretation of vacancy fits the vacancy requirement. As stated above, the definition of residential dwelling units, hotels are not included. They're trying to use this because they can't meet the vacancy regulation the way it's written. While I know the commission has a lot to consider with this application, please remember that. There should be no waiver allowed on the site plan. The expense for the applicant should never be considered as a reason not to comply with the site plan requirement. If a company wants to do business in Enfield, there are expenses that come along with that opportunity. And the SDD zone is in the business district only. It was, if it was to be written and included in the residential district, trust me, it would have been written that way. It was written by Lori Longi. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Tyler?
I have some assignments to give to Lori.
Thank you.
My back is killing me.
Yeah. Chairs aren't comfortable.
While Lori's passing this out, I can get started. My name is Tom Tyler, 18 Bridge Lane, Enfield, Connecticut. I'm a native and lifelong resident of the town. I've also practiced law in Enfield for about the last five decades. I have extensive experience in real estate and real estate-related matters, including representing applicants, as well as opponents in various planning and zoning matters before this commission and others for the past 40 years. Also been Superior Court litigating some rather complex zoning and land use issues. And so accordingly, you might want to consider giving some extra weight to my testimony based upon my education, training, and experience, especially in the area to which I'm going to address myself. So that being said, this handout that you have, I'm going to refer to different zoning and subdivision regulations, and so I thought it's easier to show you exactly where it is and what I'm talking about. So having watched these meetings for months at home, I'm familiar with all the good reasons for denial the public has brought to your attention. But there's one additional question about this application I don't recall hearing anything about, and that is, how does the applicant's proposal to add buildings to its non-conforming lot prevent it from becoming more non-conforming, as is prohibited by the zoning regulations? Again, how does the applicant's proposal to add buildings to an already non-conforming lot prevent it from becoming more non-conforming, which is prohibited by your zoning regs? And I can then point you to page four of the handout, and that's a replica of page 70 of the zoning regulations. About halfway down the page marked with asterisk, I refer to Enfield Zoning Regulation 5.60.4, capital letter B, which mandates that SDD districts follow dimensional setback requirements of the underlying zoning district of the site. Most importantly, what I've, asterisk there, refers to Section 3.40, quote, "Concerning additions shall also apply, but no existing nonconformity shall be increased." Also, Article Roman numeral four, this is now, I'm going to go to page two of the handout, and it talks about residential districts, Section 4.10 of the zoning regs, which stipulates that, quote, "Only..." About halfway down the page marked with asterisk, I refer to Enfield Zoning Regulation 5.60.4 capital letter B, which mandates that SDD districts follow dimensional setback requirements of the underlying zoning district of the site. Most importantly, what I've asterisk there refers to Section 3.40, quote, "Concerning additions shall also apply, but no existing nonconformity shall be increased." Also, Article Roman numeral four, this is now, I'm going to go to page two of the handout, and it talks about residential district, Section 4.10 of the zoning regs, which stipulates that, quote, "Only one principal building is permitted on a lot," unquote. So about a third of the way down the page, you'll see an arrow where I point to that quote. Now, 1297 Enfield Street is a legal nonconforming lot, even though it already has five buildings on that one lot. However, their proposal would add additional buildings on the lot, which would increase the existing nonconformity, and that's not permitted. The intent of the regulations for SDDs is, as has been cited by others, is to reuse existing vacant deteriorated buildings, and that section of the zoning regulations, insofar as SDD is concerned, is specific so as not to increase an existing nonconformity. I believe that's a fatal flaw in their application. A secondary issue I wanted to discuss was basically on the site plan, but Nikki Price cited some value to the site plan, and there's no need to repeat everything that she said. Donna Dubinowski is likewise eloquent, so if I can incorporate my reference, there's smart things that makes me better.
Thank you.
Okay, so now, but in terms of that, there's, on the handout, page three, a replica of page 69 of the zoning regs, about halfway down, I mark with an arrow, and this concerns, and I want to emphasize, the SDDs under business, not residential sections of the regulations, but more specifically, Section 5.60.3 entitled Procedure, whether a site plan applies or does not apply, the requirements clearly state that a site plan is to be included with the applications for the entire area proposed to be rezoned as a SDD. So that's same page, Handout 3, page 69. It's the last paragraph at the bottom of the page that I identify with brackets for you. So about a year ago, I started watching this at home, and I noticed the applicant had filed without including a site plan. They then withdrew and then brought another second application, refiled, again failing to include a site plan. Neither application, however, was accompanied by a request for a waiver. So until the public complained about this obviously obvious lack of transparency, did the applicant, at the 11th hour, make this waiver request. It should be soundly rejected for the reasons recited in the subdivision regulations. That's now Handout Page 5, which is Page 5 of the Town of Enfield Subdivision Regulation, Section 3, small letter C, waiver procedure, and vote on a subdivision plan. And about halfway down the page marked with an arrow, it depicts that there is a three-quarter vote requirement on this waiver, not a simple majority requirement. And then I bracketed the specific findings that must be made before granting such waivers. I'm not going to go through them, you know, bit by bit, but they're quite a challenge, and I submit that this commission, in good conscience, is not able to make such findings to justify a waiver under the circumstances existing in this particular case. So in conclusion, for those reasons, among others, I've reached the inescapable conclusion these applications should be denied. Thank you, and I give the rest of my time over to Nikki.
Thank you, Ms. Tyler. Thank you very much. Thank you for that information. Noel Price?
Good evening, Noel Price, 1324 Enfield Street. So I was recently on a trip to Texas, and then I came back. When I left, I was in a butter. When I came back, I was not in a butter. So go figure. With all of the stuff that's been going on, you know, I've been doing some reading, I did some Googling and found different things. What I have here is a news article. This is out of the Current Community, Thursday, August 18th of this year, and its headline says, "Glastonbury Reluctant Approval of Project Brings Opposition to Housing Law." So in the beginning of this, it says, "Some critics of Connecticut initiative to increase affordable housing are saying the recent approval of a five-story apartment building in Glastonbury illustrates the problem. Glastonbury planners last month voted 4 to 2 to authorize a 74-unit apartment building on Manchester Road despite relatively widespread opposition from neighbors." I also did some, like I said, some other Googling, and I happened to cross a webpage on the State of Connecticut General Assembly site, and this was in reference to a Bill Number 169, which reads, "An Act Concerning a Study of the Effects of Affordable Housing Policies in the State." And it goes on, and it states different things, and it says that, "Not later than January 1 of 2023, the commissioner shall submit a report in accordance with the provisions of Section 11-4A of the General Statutes to the Joint Standing Committee of the General Assembly, having cognizance of matters relating to housing containing the findings of such study and any recommended legislation." So I know there's a lot of questions about, you know, the affordable housing and various other things like that with everything that's been going on. So maybe one of the things that we need to do is just, you know, keep this open and wait until the study comes out and understand what effects that has. I've heard different things about, yes, the Felician Sisters need to build this in order to have their legacy. I've also heard that there are four or five other projects that have already been approved that are going to provide that type of housing, so there's really no need to have that. There's also been questions raised about, you know, if, what if they just did the renovations of the existing buildings to further the housing for seniors? Would that be sufficient in order for them to maintain their campus? I think we all agree, you know, we love and adore the work that they're doing. But if I were a Felician Sister and I saw all of these signs on all three sides of my property, I would begin to wonder, you know, am I doing the right thing? Is that the legacy that I want? By having abutters, true abutters, being resentful about, you know, things that are going on? If you'll just answer me a question, I don't know the procedure here. Am I able to ask a question to community builder? Or I can ask it through you?
Yes.
Okay, so there was a slide that was up there on the screen earlier, and I may have misread it, but it looked like it said something about individuals being able to rent or own the property. So I need clarification on that part. Also, on the traffic study, does that account for that particular type of an intersection? Because we have emergency services right there at South and Enfield Street. And there's, every time there's a fire or anything else like that, there are fire trucks going both ways. South Road, Enfield Street. So the additional traffic load with regard to emergency services is a concern. Parking was talked about on the new site, the additional parking that's going to be put in there. What happens during the wintertime when we have snowstorms, and all these cars have to be moved off-site in order to get the snow removed? So that's what happens with a lot of these apartment complexes, and I know what happens down in various other parts of town. Cars have to go someplace so that they can get all the snow out. Where are they going to go?
Mr. Price, your time's up.
My time's up. Okay, I'll come back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. John Kissel?
Good evening, John Kissel, 16 Fruit Terrace, Enfield, Connecticut, and this is my first and only time speaking before you folks, and I'll be brief. First of all, I'm tremendously honored to be here in front of you folks and live in the community with you. You are putting in an extreme amount of hours in your position, and that's why I believe in home rule and local control. You folks do this for no pay. It's not an easy job, and you live in the community where you have to make this decision. Fruit Terrace, for those of you who are familiar, is right on the border of the historic district. And in fact, my house was once on Enfield Street, and in the mid-'60s, they moved it from Enfield Street down to Fruit Terrace. I used to jog a lot more, but I walk in front of, all down Enfield Street. The historic district is a gem, and once you lose it, you're not going to be able to get it back. I go into this question assuming that everybody's acting in good faith, both the sisters, the developers, and the neighbors. I don't think anybody here is shooting from the hip and out for something that they're not entitled to. But I think as much as this is a nice development, it's not right for this parcel. And as much as two parties can come together and make a lease and have things that we love in it, if they mutually decide to tear it up, I can't enforce it because I'm not a party to it. I think, no matter how you feel about this in your gut, I think Attorney Tyler, who just spoke, made it very clear that inevitably this has to be denied. And I side with the neighbors, who are justifiably upset as being once called abutters and now called not abutters. There's no sidewalk on that part of Enfield Street. I can tell you that when they developed the high school and consolidated it, they went to their legislative delegation to try to get a light, but because of proximity to the light that's already there on Route 5, Enfield Street and South Road, there's super tough regulations to get anything even close. So if you have traffic issues close to that light on South Road, you're not going to be able to get any help from the State of Connecticut, is my guess, because of its proximity to the light that's already there. We talk about taking about 25 people who are there now, or maybe a little more, and turning it into a place where 300 people are going to live with automobiles? That's a complete change in character. And the addition of further nonconforming uses, as Attorney Tyler pointed out, I think inevitably leads you to the conclusion that despite the best interests of the sisters, and I agree with them, to have mixed use in many respects is a good thing, but in this place, it's not right. And to compare it to Bigelow, the Bigelow, you can go through Enfield unless you're looking for the Bigelow, you won't bump into it. You go down Route 5, Enfield Street, you're going to see this every single day. And that's the charm of Enfield. It's one of the last areas with those historic houses that have the names of the years that they were made, turn of the century, not this century, not the last century, 1700s, early 1800s. It makes a big difference. So I don't think that you, by denying this, are hurting their dream. I think they could reconfigure what they want to do. But down the road, things change, and ownership changes, and some company out in Albuquerque, New Mexico, may change their mind, and the only thing that will be left is the decision that you folks make. So I believe in you. I know it's a difficult decision, but all I can ask of you is this: Please adhere to Enfield's planning and zoning rules and regulations scrupulously. I know you will do that, and I want to thank you from the bottom of my heart for your hard work and effort in thinking over this issue, but I think if you do that, inevitably you'll come to the conclusion, even if you wish this to happen, that you have to say no. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thank you. Is there anyone who feels the need to finish what they did? Does anyone feel the need that we haven't heard you loud and clear, everyone? Anyone hasn't spoken for the first time?
Sorry, I didn't sign.
That's okay. That's why I asked. Thank you for putting your hand up, or I wouldn't have noticed.
This is the first time, right? My name is Kim Wilcox-Pappas. My family resides on One Riverview Street in Enfield, and I have the unique perspective of having two children that attend the Enfield Montessori School. And all I can say is that all you have to do is to step into that school and know that you've come across a place that is producing the next generation of model citizens who are being taught to reason, be kind, and do good in the world. This is the kind of school you want in your community and can be proud of. With the help of the Felician Sisters, the school was renovated and opened nearly six years ago. Families in the community, businesses, and alumni families contributed funds to create a school which could accommodate the growing number of families who wish to have children experience this type of education.
But Kim, excuse me, this application has nothing to do with the school, so do you have something specifically to talk about the proposal?
Yes.
Okay, so you can skip to that, please.
Yeah, sorry. So when that all happened, nowhere in there was it explained that there was going to be additional housing on that campus, and we're looking at it from the standpoint of the longevity of the school. And as parents whose children attend there and are hoping in the future that our grandchildren will attend there, you have to consider whether it is, by rezoning this, you're changing the character of the entire property that the school is on, and therefore, the idea that the school is there to, again, produce wonderful citizens that will continue to live in the community and currently, hold on a second. It just, based on what was discussed in previous meetings, there's not a lot of advantage for the school, and potentially, I don't know if that was anything that's considered in that aspect, but we, as the community, feel that we're a vital aspect to that area and hope that your decision will take into account all of the information and all of the important aspects that everyone else has spoken as well. That's it. I'm very tired.
It's okay. Thank you.
I'm sure you are, too.
We have a lot more to do yet tonight.
Yeah. Thank you.
So is there anyone here who believes they really need to add on to the end?
I don't know how to do it.
Jesus Christ.
I kept it separate, but I did write, and I'm going to consolidate because I've given you the write-up.
Yeah, consolidate quickly, too, right, Ms. Longy? You're going to consolidate quickly, because you don't get another five minutes. You get three.
Oh, come on.
No, come on. This would be like your seventh time talking here, so I think we've heard you loud and clear, my friend.
I get a lot of material coming here.
I'm not sure we really need it at this point.
Okay. This part, as a past P&amp;Z commissioner, I was part of the long process of meeting with residents, developing, and approving our current plan of conservation and development after public hearings. I would like to point out that...
Can you pause for a minute, please?
Oh.
We want to get the paperwork.
Oh, good, okay. Because then I can skip around.
All right, go ahead, Lori.
Okay. I have attached for you the factual sections in our plan that applies to this public hearing, and I made a statement. I'm not going to read all of this because I'm giving it to you.
Please.
But what I really want to go to is the most important statement is located on page 36. Finally, "The future land use eliminates the current zoning special development district. SDDs are no longer needed because the future land use accommodates the uses that were otherwise not allowed in the current zoning." This one statement backs up my previous conclusion that the SDD was in the business section of the regulation and to be used in that section, the business zone. The plan of conservation clearly states that if the town is going to allow for residential in a business section of town, then we no longer need the SDD zone. It further identified 43 acres of land labeled business land and not residential land since the residential land is identified as 16,492 acres. Okay? This development of 1297 Enfield Street is clearly in a residential zone and clearly not following the plan of conservation and development as written. The SDD was for the business zones. Then I want to go into about the activity on the campus. It has five major buildings on it. I saw the calculations done by the app... I saw the calculations done by the applicant, and they said they meant the 80% vacancy, but they only had two buildings listed on that list. The public knows that the Yellow House on South Road is occupied by the chaplain. He walks a couple times a day. He's friendly, and he knows all the neighbors. The school is fully occupied, and when the sister Patricia closed the adult daycare during COVID, the school actually went into her space and has the older kids, the 7th and 8th grades, it's not vacant. I have many friends with grandkids at that school. In the same building, the second floor is called Mother Angelica's Residence, was occupied by sisters up until this past winter. The Orrin Thompson House has 22 apartments, that is full. Now we have the Nuns' Convent, as I call it. The second floor is an infirmary. Nobody's talking about the infirmary for retired nuns. And the third floor is occupied by the Franciscan Friars. Nobody's mentioned that either. It's fully staffed 24/7 by nurses, CNAs, and medical staff. The dining and kitchen areas are on the main floor. It's used every day and even by the apartment people stopping by for a meal. It's got a nice side porch that you can see people in. The building has a chapel, which is used daily, and the auditorium that's under the chapel is used by the school for events and gym class on rainy days. We know the nuns live there. The summer, there were air conditioners on all floors, scattered around the building. Maintenance and other staff is on the B side of the building. The people that live around the area know the activity. We know what the activity is. The property has five buildings, and it simply can't meet the 80% vacancy. Vacancy in the dictionary in our regulation means empty space, void, unoccupied, state of being vacant. Then, under the word vacant, it says not lived in. The property is lived in. Remember, the SDD was only used a couple times, but the times it was used, the buildings were clearly vacant. The campus is very active. The parking lot on the side is full at 9 o'clock every day and 3:00. There's medical staff, residents, and the school, and that's why we need a site plan and not a waiver. Lastly, the town attorney mentioned the ART meeting. I went to see the fire marshal myself. He mentioned that there were two meetings. Commissioner Alamo asked about the meetings and was told there was no meeting. The fire marshal said that the plan that he saw in the spring did not get the fire department's approval. It's just another reason why you should not waive this site plan requirement. And the only other thing I want to talk about is traffic, and that's because I was the one that brought off that it wasn't a traffic study, it was an impact study. But I mentioned the development that was across from Enfield High, and it's supposed to encompass everything that's in the proposed area, and it did not, and it was not actual data. Thank you.
The only thing I'll mention, thank you, Lori, the only thing I'll mention is you missed, Commissioner Alamo asked about meeting minutes and was told there wasn't any.
Okay, minutes.
Let's make that correction to your statement, if you don't mind.
All right, thank you.
Not that there wasn't a meeting. There was no minutes taken at that meeting. Again, I'm going to... Before we continue, Mr. Thibodeau, I'll entertain a motion that we extend the meeting, and the plan is only past 11 o'clock. We have to do that, please. Motion made by Commissioner DeGray, seconded by Commissioner Higley. Any discussion on a motion? Seeing on all those in favor, send by saying aye.
Aye.
Let the record show that this meeting will be continued past 11 o'clock. Mr. Thibodeau, come on up. Doesn't help.
I know it's late, I know you're tired, but since I'm the only member of the public speaking in favor of this thing, I just want to make a really brief point.
Sure.
I don't have the expert weight of some people, but I worked as a newspaper reporter for covering zoning issues for a good number of years, and I've seen more than a dozen-plus dozen-dozen-dozen, then be meltdowns on projects. And they all follow the same pattern. They all just go crazy over these things if affordable housing's involved. And they just want these things opposed and killed, okay? You can never get at the root cause of them, because they'll never talk frankly everything as circumspect why they hate affordable housing.
Please. Quiet the audience, please. Can't hear the applicant or the resident. Thank you.
What I've heard here tonight is a little bit of intimidation, a little bit of like convoluted argument, but nothing that changes the central facts of this thing. It has no impact on this historic district or this neighborhood. And once this thing is built, these people will love it. The only thing I have to say to you is this. The only thing I have to say to you is this, and this is something I have learned, this is my one expert weight, because I learned it personally, that in life, your opportunity to do some good, something that's really great, those opportunities are very few, and they're very fleeting. You have a chance here to change the lives of 304 people you don't know and who you will never hear from here, because that's not how this works. But you will make a difference. And I know that if you vote yes on this thing, when you drive by there in five, 10 years, and you look at the differences that you made, you'll feel that you've done something really good and real honest and beneficial for this town and for this whole community. I urge you to vote yes on this thing and not get buried in the technicalities. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm looking around, I don't see anyone else, everyone else is finished, so I guess we'll stop. That is the end of public input into this application tonight. I do want to mention that to everybody. That'll be the end of public input into this application. Mr. Landelina, you get a...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I should say Attorney Landelina, I apologize. You get a chance to do a rebuttal, or, and actually, we get a last chance, maybe ask some questions of you two? There was a few that were brought up.
Yeah, we'll certainly answer any questions that... First of all, there was one specific question about ownership or rental. These are all going to be rental units. Nothing's going to be owned. So I guess that answers that one specific question. So at our first meeting, almost everyone who got up from the public accused us of trying to do something in the historic district.
Excuse me. Sister, I can't hear. Mr. Thibodeau?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me. Please take, can you please take it outside? Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Landelina.
So in order to ensure the public that, we had no intention of doing anything ever in the historic district, which is not a zoning district, by the way, you know that, all right? We withdrew our, redrew our line. As a consequence of that, yes, the 500-foot buffer changed, but it wasn't some devious or deceptive plan to get our way around 8-3B in the requirements, all right? And I guess I was only called devious and deceptive twice tonight, so that's, for me, that's a win. But it's also called a prominent attorney by Mr. Spazzerini, and I do appreciate that. So with respect to Attorney Tyler's evidence or statements to you tonight, and lawyers say this all the time, and I sincerely mean this, Tom Tyler is a colleague and a very good friend of mine. And I know him well enough, so I can say I respectfully disagree with his analysis, all right? We're not creating any more nonconformities, and if we were, that's going to be addressed at the site plan stage. Secondly, he made reference to the subdivision regulations and waivers. The subdivision regulations have nothing to do with this. So you have a provision in your zoning regulations that you can waive all or some of the site plan requirements. That's what we're asking you to do. It wasn't done at the 11th hour. It was done several months ago. So we're asking you to do that. That does require a 3/4 vote. We understand that. So, you know, it is what it is. The regulations stay what they say. We think we've met the regulations. So I usually don't do this, but I feel compelled. Well, let's talk about the petition for a second. I've done this dozens of times. It's a very straightforward thing, okay? It should not be that difficult to understand whether they meet the 20% or not. And the Supreme Court has laid out the process. You don't have to have it in your regulations. The Supreme Court tells you what to do, exactly what to do. So I would submit to you that if we've got some 11th-hour maneuvering here, it's the addition of additional names on this petition. So I think you need to ask your town attorney, after the public hearing is closed, would be fine, whether or not the petition, the 8-3B petition, can be amended or added to after this thing starts, all right? Because clearly, before today, clearly, under any analysis, the way I know, not understand, know how the law works with respect to these petitions, the 20% was not met. And I'll leave it to you, staff, and the town attorney to go from there. The last comment I'm going to make is from a very recent Connecticut Supreme Court case, okay? It's called McLaughlin versus Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Bethel. Chief Justice Robinson of the Connecticut Supreme Court authored this opinion unanimously decided by the court. And people, I'm not going to make any friends here tonight, I can tell you that, but I think this is something you need to hear. All decisions by zoning commissions must be substantiated by what's called substantial evidence in the record. Not just evidence, substantial evidence. Your town attorney can tell you what that means. Been stated a million times in cases. I can tell you what substantial evidence is not, from Chief Justice Robinson of the Connecticut Supreme Court. He said, just three months ago, "Evidence of general environmental impacts," which we don't have, "mere speculation or general concerns still do not qualify as substantial evidence, even when testified by to an expert." As we have discussed many times, general concerns, speculation, and mere worry without more do not qualify as substantial evidence. Here's a, and again, "public testimony is not to be considered substantial evidence when it is not supported by anything other than speculation and conjecture on the part of those objecting to the proposed activities." It goes on to say, "If we were to hold otherwise, individual members of a community would be able to block any application due to substantiated fears about future events, most importantly, an approach that is wholly inconsistent with the obligation of local land use authorities to exercise their authority for the benefit of the community as a whole." That's your role here. It's a legislative one, so you have full discretion. I think we've met the requirements, but the only extra testimony I heard was from a traffic engineer, and he said the level of services is not going to change at these intersections. There's no controverting testimony on that. Yes, it's already busy there. It's busy, Enfield is a busy town with a lot of busy roads. But I submit to you, other than the issues of whether we meet the vacancy, now vacancy is different than vacancy rate, I would submit to you, all right? That's your decision. Whether we get the waiver or not, that's wholly your decision. Whether we get the approval or not, that's your decision. But respectfully to the community, I haven't heard one thing that rises to the level of substantial evidence. Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we would like to have the public hearing closed. I don't think there's any reason to, I mean, besides answering questions.
I want to see if there's any, yeah, I want to see before the lead, any other questions.
We have nothing more to give you or tell you.
Are there any more questions of the applicant on this application? Looking around, I'm going to ask for the last time, is there any, is there anything the staff would like to ask us or the applicant before we close the public hearing? Lori? Oh, okay. Yeah, because at this point, we're...
Can you provide a copy of the case or just a citation?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Okay.
What about... Thank you, Attorney Landelina. We're just...
Of course.
We've come this far since, for last meeting in June, I think it's...
I'm here at your disposal.
Couple more minutes here, just to, because we certainly don't want to end this if we shouldn't be at this point.
Yeah, understood.
I don't have any questions at this point.
Okay, so are we in position, is the commission in position, that they are willing to close this public hearing? Entertain a motion to, no, forget, now, at that point, we just can discuss among ourselves. There were no more questions of the applicant. It's just our discussions at this point. So I'll entertain a motion to close a public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Chairman Higley, seconded by Commissioner Majmadar to close the public hearing. All those in favor closing the public hearing, send by saying aye.
Aye.
Do you want to take a roll call vote?
Sure, sure. We'll take a roll call vote to make a, go ahead.
Lou Fiore.
Close the public hearing.
Virginia Higley.
Close.
Linda DeGreg.
Close.
John Petronella's recused.
Coran.
Close.
Ken Holinsky.
Close.
Christian D'Antonio.
Close.
Okay.
The record showed it was unanimous, seven, nothing to close the public hearing. Six, I'm sorry, yeah, six, you're right. So you said seven. I'm just going to take a two-second break here, because my back is killing me.
Thank you for your time, everyone, I appreciate it.
Yeah. Just give us a two-minute break. I got to get up.
So we're at the point, fellow commissioners, of some deliberations or conversations, let's
put it that way. I'm looking to see what some opinions are. And not to do any votes tonight, not to do any straw vote polling, just to base some opinions, because we do have time to act on this application, we don't have to totally act on it tonight, but we should start the process somewhat to keep it going. We do have three things we need to discuss before we discuss even the merits of the application, and that is, one, do we request or do we side with the waiver of the site plan, or do we reject that? Two, do we agree to what the applicant is saying, what the vacancy rate should be, or the vacancy rules for defining that, or, or staffs in our current regulation state? And three, whether we agree that the SDD zone is, applies not just to business and industry, but also to residential areas, even though it's not an X section. So we really need to determine those waivers or agreements to. Having said that, at least in my own mind, that basically almost the negative to any one of those or the rejection of any of those pretty much forces a rejection of the whole application, any one, one or any. So I'm interested in opinions, and that's all, we're not going to take any votes tonight, and we're just going to start this process for the record. So I guess as chairman, I guess I'll start first, and then I'm just going to go around and just ask for everyone's opinion, what they think. And let's start off with the waiver of the site plan requirements. In my opinion, yes, I do see the way the SDD is written today, that might not be a, a really fair way, the SDD requirement specifically says it must be a site plan. Our regulation says it must be a site plan, not a master plan. Whether we can argue whether that's fair or not, that's for another day. Right now, it requires a site plan. And yes, sorry to say, that puts the burden on the applicant. In my opinion, the burden is on the applicant, it's not on the residents, it's not on the town, it's not on staff, the burden is on the applicant. So the way I see it, the way our regulation is written today, I cannot agree to the waiver for, for the site plan. I'd like, agree the master plan is a fine plan, don't get me wrong, it is a nice master plan, but it is not a detailed site plan that our regulations require us today to have the applicant provide for us. So having said that, I'm just going to do just like this, I'm going to go to my vice chair next and see what's your opinion on this.
I agree, while it's probably going to be costly, we, we need to adhere to our regulations, and our regulations call for a site plan to be presented at the same time, so I would like to see that.
Okay. Commissioner DeGreg, Vice Chairman DeGreg.
I also agree, it does require a site plan. According to our regulations, we have had two other SDDs recently before this commission, which they did provide the site plan. To waive this would be setting a different precedent going forward, so I agree, we have to adhere to our regulations.
Thank you. Commissioner Holinsky.
I'm torn. And the reason I'm torn is because we're asking, and I understand about the regulations, okay? And, but as far as the master plan is concerned, I think there is enough detail in that to show what the sisters are trying to do in the area, and I would think that that would be enough for us to go forward and make decisions, a decision on whether or not to accept the proposal. So that would be my opinion, I would, I would opt for the waiver.
Okay. Commissioner Majmadar.
A site plan requires that the commission should have set a density level, number of units, and we don't have that, we have not set that limit. So as a result, I feel that the applicant cannot provide a site plan that's accurate. In its place, the applicant has provided a master plan and has more or less agreed to make it as a voluntary condition. So in my opinion, site plan waiver is legitimate.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner D'Antonio.
Yeah, it's, it's definitely an interesting point about the, basically the catch-22 that they're in, which, it's my understanding, and I understand staff's interpretation of it, and, and just all of our interpretations of it. I, I do think that, you know, they've been cooperating, providing us a satisfactory master plan to this point, and, and it is seemingly unrealistic to get the site plan without, without getting the basic, basic approval for, for the density they need. So I, I understand the, the value of giving them a waiver for the, the site plan.
Okay, thank you. And again, as chairman, I do want to say to the applicant, you did a fine job with the master plan, you, you listened to us and listened to the community, and you did apply, from a master plan standpoint, everything that we've asked for from a master plan. So I certainly want to give credit to the applicant for that. All right, so we're not taking a vote tonight, we're just getting our opinions out there. Now we have to move on to the next with the vacancy rate. Clearly, again, I'm going to be siding with, again, the staff on this, I think our interpretation of what the vacancy rate is, is appropriate, I think there's been a lot of information brought forward about the occupancy of those buildings in the area. And clearly, too, I think, as Attorney Landalee even mentioned in a way, is that when, when you, if you go to the occupancy rate and you go back to the SDD, it's almost like the SDD was written for non-residential. So to me, I'm, I'm not going to give them a waiver on vacancy rate, I'm going to be siding with our staff's interpretation of what the vacancy rate and how that should be calculated. That's, that's just my opinion. Commissioner Higley.
I...
We'll go, we'll go different this time. Commissioner D'Antonio, you can start off on that. We'll break it up.
Sure, yeah, yeah, this is a, definitely a tough one, because I definitely understand the vacancy rate for, for the residential use, I think, is, is pretty cut and dry. I, I think it's pretty clear that it meets those, that vacancy, the vacancy rate, the vacancy rate of the non-residential uses. It seems like, honestly, we just don't have enough information there. Like I said, for, as far as the residential uses, which is seemingly the primary use of, of it, it seems satisfactory, but for, for the, the non-residential uses, it's, it's just unclear.
So are you, again, you kind of lost me in meetings, it's getting late, too. Are you willing to go along with the applicant's version of the vacancy rate, or are you willing to, with staff's interpretation of the vacancy rate?
I, I can understand the, the vacancy rate being the, the units, the, the residential units, in the, the residential unit, so I, I understand that.
Okay. Commissioner Majmadar.
Yeah, I think the vacancy based on square footage use is a valid argument, because even if the space is not being used for a specific purpose, it's still a space that can be used for a residential purpose. So in my opinion, what the applicant has presented, a square footage comparison, a ratio, in my opinion, is good.
Okay, so you're willing to grant the waiver?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Holinsky.
I agree with the staff that the interpretation is clear, and should encompass the whole interior of the building.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Commissioner Holinsky, Commissioner DeGreg, or Vice Chairman DeGreg, I'm sorry. Sorry for doing that all night.
That's okay. It's, we're getting tired.
Yeah.
I agree with the staff's interpretation, but I also have, this project is, currently we're looking at five, one, two, three, four buildings right now, and two of those buildings, three buildings, the chapel, the school, and the senior housing are, are occupied and being used. So I'm not comfortable with the applicant's interpretation. They're being used, they may not be every room at the exact same time being filled, but it is being used, so I'm comfortable not giving the waiver.
Vice Chairman Higley.
I agree with what Linda just said, I'm not comfortable with the applicant's asking for a waiver. It's, I always thought of SDD as being created for empty deteriorating, non-used at all buildings, and I don't feel that the, that this property fits that description, so I would not be in favor of a waiver.
Thank you. And then we'll move on to the next question, just to, for discussion, and that is whether we agree that the SDD zone, the way it currently is, even though it is in, not in the residential area, can be used in a residential area, even though for other unique things such as the Bigelow Commons, which was done many, many years ago, and I believe might even, I wasn't here, it might have been done for Blair Manor, I'm not sure if it was or not, but even though clearly is not in the residential area, nor is there any research for minutes that, that was in admission, I think from what we can gather back in 2002 or something, it was discussed, but never voted on. So clearly, you know, whether we can want to even use that, and I'm not saying, if I don't mind me moving on a little bit, I'm not saying that's right or wrong, I'm not saying that maybe, but right now, currently in our regulations, it is not referenced into residential and all yet, you know, rightly or wrongly, maybe the path they were given was to try to use this in a residential area. So do we want to accept that at this point, that, that, you know, yes, okay, we're going to, just going to keep going forward and using SDDs in a residential area? Currently, and it was a good point here, I know someone else was going to bring that up, about our plan of conservation development, which I should mention is not the Bible, it's not a legal document that we have to adhere to, it is a reference document that we should pay darn good attention to, because it's, you know, it's, it's been done for that purpose, to give us guidance. But clearly it says, and, you know, I'll, I'll read it, "Finally, the future land use eliminates the current zoning SDD, the need for it." It was right in our last, of course, this is 10, 12 years old now, don't get me wrong. But again, we have to decide whether we're willing to accept this application and the path that they were given using the SDD. I, I'm mixed on this, because I, the, the staff was, at one point, someone was giving them guidance to yes, and I shouldn't say staff, but somebody or something was giving them guidance to try to use this with the SDD zone, whether that was rightly or wrongly. So I do feel for the applicant in that, in that end, yet at the same token, you know, our SDD, the way it currently is, doesn't really reference residential at all, which is like trying to take a square peg through a round hole, that's how I feel, but I'm, I'm mixed on this. So we'll go around, I'll start this way again, with Commissioner Higley, her file on this.
I feel badly because they came before us and got steered in the direction of SDD, but the regulations are clear, and it's only stated in the business district, so I'm, I'm of the belief, if it's in the zoning regulations, you have to adhere to it until it's changed. So I wouldn't be in favor of a waiver based on that.
Commissioner DeGreg.
I, I agree with Commissioner Higley, it's in our regulations, in the industrial zone, with the belief, I have to go with what I can read, is that it was developed for a industrial building that was vacant to be reutilized, as we did with Bigelow, and then we reused it again for Blair Manor. So I'm going to have to go with what's in our regulations and where it's regulated. So I wouldn't be comfortable with the waiver.
We're accepting, so it wouldn't even be a waiver in this case, we're accepting.
I wouldn't accept, right.
Commissioner Holinsky.
I don't see where it says you can't use it in the residential zone, and that's what bothers me. So, so I would be in favor of granting the waiver or determine that the residential districts are included in the SDD zone, because I don't see anywhere where it says they're not.
(inaudible).
Okay.
Commissioner Majmadar.
Yeah, I also agree that this SDD applying, being applied to this particular use and zone is appropriate, more because, number one, our regulations are not all that clear that it cannot be used in residential, that's number one. Number two, it's appropriate for this location and for this property to have residential development occur. It's highly underutilized property, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner D'Antonio.
Yeah, I, I thought it was definitely interesting hearing about the, the history of the regulations, how it, it sounded like a logistical kind of mishmash, our, our current regulations, the way a bunch of sections were just combined into, into one section, kind of thrown together, and another section just eliminated out of redundancy. I, I too don't see, see a limitation to, to, I don't see an intent behind it to restrict it to just commercial. Being able to adapt underutilized buildings is, is not, like, not just commercial, and there, there are points in the SDD section where, where it does, it does specify allowing the use of residential, which, which I think is notable in, in the POCD, it doesn't, it doesn't, it also doesn't mention that the SDD was designed exclusively for a certain type of zone. So in that case, I, I can see the SDD being applicable here.
Not, not to sway anyone, because I'm not trying to do that at all, but I do want to, I do want to read in our special development, SDD district, a 22-1, the purpose, just to make it clear of the SDD. The purpose is, the sole purpose of this district is to enable the rehabilitation or adaptive reuse of vacant, deteriorated, or underutilized building. There's no mention here of new construction. There's no mention here in SDD of new construction. I'm not saying that's right or wrong, that's for a different day, that's for a different discussion when we get to that point in December, right, Karan? Right now, the way our regulations are written, it's, again, the sole purpose of this district is to enable the rehabilitation or adaptive reuse of vacant, deteriorator, deteriorized or underutilized buildings, no mention of new construction. Just want to make that point, that's all. So I'll just, for you guys, just to think about. Please, if you want to keep going.
Yeah, just, just in the, the section about the, the building, the subsection with the buildings and conformity, I mean, it explicitly does mention new buildings, it doesn't say, no new buildings are allowed, it, it says, no new buildings can be constructed until the existing structures are fully rehabilitated.
Yeah, I thought you were, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, so I, I, I definitely agree, the, the central intent of the SDD is to rehabilitate existing buildings, but I think it's pretty clear that it doesn't prevent the expansion of, of said buildings, or even the creation of new buildings on the, in the district.
Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
I'm going to play devil's advocate. The zoning regulations were created to tell you what you can do in a zone. If it's not in there, it goes without saying that you cannot do that. Staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm, gee, I'm not wrong. So just because it's not in there, you can't decide to do it, even though you think it's a, a great idea, until you change the zone. industrial building that was vacant to be reutilized as we did with Bigelow. And then we reused it again for Blair Manor. So I'm going to have to go with what's in our regulations and where it's regulated. So I wouldn't be comfortable with the waiver.
We're accepting. So it wouldn't even be a waiver in this case.
I wouldn't accept.
Yes. Yeah. Commissioner Holinsky?
I don't see where it says you can't use it in the residential zone. And that's what bothers me. So I would be in favor of granting the waiver or determine that the residential districts are included in the SDD zone because I don't see anywhere where it says they're not.
Chat after this.
Okay. Commissioner Mahfendar?
Yeah. I also agree that this SDD applying... Being applied to this particular use and zone is appropriate, more because, number one, our regulations are not all that clear that it cannot be used in residential. That's number one. Number two, it's appropriate for this location and for this property to have residential development occur. It's highly underutilized property, in my opinion.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner DeAntoni?
Yeah. I thought it was definitely interesting hearing about the history of the regulations, how it sounded like a logistical kind of mishmash. Our current regulations, the way a bunch of sections were just combined into one section, kind of thrown together, and another section just eliminated out of redundancy. I too don't see a limitation to... I don't see an intent behind it to restrict it to just commercial. Being able to adapt underutilized buildings is not like... Not just commercial. And there are points in the SDD section where it does specify allowing the use of residential, which I think is notable in the POCD. It doesn't... It doesn't... It also doesn't mention that the SDD was designed exclusively for a certain type of zone. So in that case, I can see the SDD being applicable here.
Not to sway anyone, because I'm not trying to do that at all, but I do want to read in our special development, SDD District, a 22-1, the purpose. Just to make it clear of the SDD. The purpose is the sole purpose of this district is to enable the rehabilitation or adaptive reuse of vacant, deteriorated, or underutilized buildings. There's no mention here of new construction. There's no mention here in SDD of new construction. I'm not saying that's right or wrong. That's for a different day. That's for a different discussion when we get to that point in December. Right, Karan? Right now, the way our regulations are written, it's again, the sole purpose of this district is to enable the rehabilitation or adaptive reuse of vacant, deteriorized, or underutilized buildings. No mention of new construction. Just want to make that point. That's all. So just for you guys just to think about.
Sure.
Please, if you want to keep going.
Yeah. Just in the section about the building... The subsection with the buildings and conformity. I mean, it explicitly does mention new buildings. It doesn't say no new buildings are allowed. It says no new buildings can be constructed until the existing structures are fully rehabilitated.
Yeah. I thought you were. I'm sorry.
Yeah. So I definitely agree. The central intent of the SDD is to rehabilitate existing buildings, but I think it's pretty clear that it doesn't prevent the expansion of said buildings or even the creation of new buildings on the... In the district.
Okay. Go ahead. Thank you.
I'm going to play devil's advocate. The zoning regulations were created to tell you what you can do in a zone. If it's not in there, it goes without saying that you cannot do that. Staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm not wrong. So just because it's not in there, you can't decide to do it, even though you think it's a great idea, until you change the zoning regulations, which we're going to look at shortly. But until you do that, you have to work within the parameters you're given. And if it doesn't say it, it's not so.
Staff concur.
Thank you.
Sorry.
So I think it's getting late. We have other things to do tonight. Does anyone else want to add tonight?
Nope.
We're going to pick this back up the next meeting. We are definitely going to close this out and have a formal vote at the next meeting. Yep.
Chairman, if I... I just want to clarify that these are... You're talking about interpretations of the regulations, and the word waiver has come up a number of times. These are not waivers.
Right.
They're just interpretations of your regulations.
Yep.
Thank you.
Exactly. Yep. So the plan is we just wanted to get this discussion out, and we all have... Now we kind of know where we are. We're going to think about it. We have two weeks.
Yep.
We're going to come back and do the formal discussion again and a formal vote on these and on the application to approve or reject itself in the next meeting. Sound like a plan to everyone?
Yep.
So with that, I will...
Just so you know, you have more than two weeks.
We do have more than two.
Sixty-five days.
Yeah. If we're not ready, we're not ready. But I have a funny feeling, looking at my fellow commissioners, we're going to be ready. You know, so I would entertain a motion to table this application to the next meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made to table... I'm getting tired. PH 3040 MA to the next meeting. That'll be held on September 22 at 7:00 PM. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Let it show that it was unanimous, six-nothing, to table to the next meeting. Chris, if you don't mind getting John. Yeah. I'm getting a little tired. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening. John, what were you doing out there? All right. Let's get a chance for John to sit. Let me get myself... I have so many notes all over the place. Let myself get organized. All right. Just to mention that PH 3043-78 has asked to be continued until September 22. So we will not be hearing taking that off the table or opening that hearing tonight. Moving on to new business again, also that SPR 1907 Hazard Avenue has also been asked to be continued until September 22. So we won't be opening up that tonight. Now we're moving on to other business. And the other business is...
Proposed draft.
The discussion on... You're on. The discussion on modification of the cannabis regulations to BR zones. Should I start first? Fill in the commissioners.
You're the chair.
I'm the tired chair.
It's good to be that.
Just briefly, we've had inquiries to place cannabis establishments in the BR zone, so the mall area. Because of like one use, if you do like... Like if it's a school or a early...
Daycare.
Daycare. I was going to say early learning center, but daycare. And we have a separation distance of 1,500 feet that if... So we have one use like that. It eliminates over half of the business regional.
I would say two-thirds of that business regional.
Yeah. So it... I mean, it makes it very difficult. And I think if there's going to be a cannabis use, I think the goal would be to have it in the, you know, in the business regional rather than intermixed with little, you know, neighborhoods and things like that. So Matt and I looked at this, and I'm going to let him take it from here because he was the wordsmith here, and we...
Well, it's really fairly simple. We tried to write it as narrowly as we could. And with any kind of a modification regulation, you always have to include criteria and findings. So we did that as well. The sense was that the BR zone, just the nature of development within the BR zone, is somewhat distinguished from other developments in other zones. And so that uniqueness, in a sense, kind of legitimized, if you will, this notion of potentially modifications to those separation distances within the BR. So that's the gist of it. I mean, the language, I think you did get the language. The other thing that we did do, and this... I don't know if this was an oversight or whatever you want to characterize it as, and I don't want to be critical, is we wanted to make sure that the ZBA... It's kind of up our pole of our conversation earlier tonight. That the ZBA wasn't in a position to grant variances to the separation distance requirements. Not saying they would or they wouldn't, but to make it clear in the regulation, we incorporated that provision in there. So that prohibition, you're allowed as Planning and Zoning Commission to put those prohibitions in there relative to ZBA. So we did that for this as well.
There's other things like...
So...
Yeah. Hold on. Through the chair. Through the chair. Let him finish. Yeah, please.
I really don't... Unless you have particular questions, I mean, what we'd like to do is we'd like to move this forward with your consensus, get this out, start the process. Obviously, this is a reg amendment. It would have to go to public hearing, and there are timeframes and procedures for that. So it's early September at this point. So if you have any questions, happy to answer those.
Karan, you had a question? Did you have a question?
Yeah. I had the question. Do we as PDC... As the PDC, do we have authority to tell ZBA what they can and what they cannot?
Yes. Absolutely. In fact, there's an explicit statutory...
We could tell them that they're prohibited from...
There's a state statute that allows a zoning commission to prohibit the zoning board of appeals from granting variances.
Wow. I didn't know that.
I think there's actually in the reg... There may actually be a couple of sections in there right now.
Yep.
Where they're prohibited from giving variances on certain topics or regs, I guess.
Like they can't vary density, for instance. Things like that.
And sparingly used. Some communities use it really, you know, in a very kind of broad way. Most communities are pretty particular about specific pieces that they really feel strongly about that they don't want the ZBA.
Thank you.
Very...
Any other questions? Oh, sorry. Thank you.
She was about to tap you.
It's okay.
Christian saw you.
Sorry, even if you ignored me.
It wouldn't have been that.
It's okay. When you were talking about changing the distance, do we have some idea of what that distance would be for the BR zone?
Well, that would be...
I'm just trying to get a feel for this.
Right. I mean, sometimes people would put in like up to 50% or some kind of a marker. We didn't do that. You could certainly do that if you wanted to. You may want to be kind of careful about that, just a thought, and leave yourself enough flexibility based on the criteria and the specifics of a particular situation to go beyond 50%. Just using 50% is just a reference point. And the idea about the criteria is to allow you to look at the specifics of a particular situation and judge as a group whether or not, you know, going down to certain distances. You know, we have... The regulation was written, and again, I'm not being critical, but there are multiple, multiple, multiple uses that require distance separation, bike lanes. Some of those... Some of the requirements in the reg, I frankly don't even know how to interpret them and make them operational.
It's all right.
The way it was written. So maybe there's a reason why it was written the way it was written. But, you know, nonetheless, that, I guess, is more reason why this kind of a modification provision makes sense for just the BR zones and not applying it broadly across the entire community. We had also looked at taking it out of the BL zones because those are neighborhood business districts. So and the practical reality of these facilities being located in the BL zones, the way that they're situated through town, is fairly limited. We decided against doing that because we wanted to keep this pretty narrow and not like open up a conversation again in the community to talk about every aspect of the regulation. This is really what the focus...
I agree. Because I don't think we really... Because we were just trying to develop something.
Right.
We didn't really think about the BR zone and its proximity to the college and to the daycare. So we just were thinking...
Right.
I think we were thinking more of the high schools, elementary schools, middle school.
Sure. And BR development, like you take the mall property, there are multiple properties within the mall property. But in some cases, there aren't. There, you know, you have multiple, you know, freestanding buildings on lease parcels or whatever it happens to be. So the BR is kind of unique enough. I think it could justify doing this.
Okay. I was just wondering if there was like a distance that you had thought about. All right. Thank you.
You know, one of the things that you have to consider is that a lot of these uses might be transient. They might be there tomorrow, but not in a year.
Right.
So you have to consider that as well.
And the staff said the proposal is strictly limited to the BR zone. That's all we're looking at, which is basically the mall area.
Right.
Christian?
So if I may add, I think it may be... It seems like we had kind of like shot ourselves in the foot a little before. We were kind of maybe a little too narrow sighted, yeah, a little too focused. I know there are lots of Thompsonville, and I know, I think we may have kind of lost sight of the BR zone, which I think is kind of what we realize and is pretty evident as like the primary zone we should be focusing on for this use and giving ourselves some flexibility for that. So I think I understand that. Does that sound about right?
Yeah, I think so. There was definitely... I mean, Thompsonville was the focus, from my experience sitting through the hearings and things, of probably 90% of the conversation was really about, you know, Thompsonville. So and we wouldn't be changing anything. We don't want to open that can of worms again. We want to kind of mix metaphors and let that dog sleep and all that good stuff.
Limit our... Limit the change. So is there consensus to have staff proceed with this so for the next meeting?
Yeah. I just had another question.
Sorry, Ken. Yeah, I didn't see your hand.
So are we proposing distances? Or are we proposing percentages? Or we haven't decided yet?
This draft that we just offered does not have...
Yeah.
Specific distances, as we were talking before, that, you know, subject to approval of a modification, with these criterion findings, the Planning and Zoning Commission could reduce the required distance up to 50% or no more than 50. We didn't do that. We left it open for your discretion.
Okay.
Based on the particulars of a given situation.
Because I remember we did a lot... We had all the distances in the Thompsonville portion of it.
Even the other part, we did too.
In the other part.
Yeah.
Yeah. So those laws... All of those requirements are going to stay. Those don't change.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, you have now opportunity to modify those if you're inclined to do so based on the facts of a particular situation.
So are you going to give us... I'm sorry. Are you done, Ken?
Yeah.
I apologize. I'm sorry. Are you going to give us a cut at a new regulation at the next meeting?
Yeah. What I would do is I would put this into the form of an actual, you know, regulation, codify it, and, you know...
With the old regulation and just...
It would probably end up being a section, just a new... Another section in the...
For BR zone?
Probably in the cannabis.
Yeah. Yes, I mean, yeah, in the cannabis.
Just for the BR.
Karan?
Yeah. My only comment is, yeah, thanks. We would like to see a newer version with some kind of limitations. I'd also like to make sure that we sort of show limitation is not another big hoop to jump through rather than making it a little more inviting. I don't know how best to do that. These are both contradicting requirements. But I'd like not to have too much of restrictions.
Right. Right. Well, right now, if you were to look at the BR zone, I think somebody mentioned two-thirds or whatever the percentage was that, you know... And we were talking about, and it's getting late, we were talking about trying to put a map together, like the map that you would use when you adopted the regs originally. And again, some of those... Some of the limitations in the regulation are just... They're just not operational, like a bike path. What's a bike path? Define that. Does that mean a bike path that is actually like a DOT-approved in-the-road bikeway? Or is it, you know, there's a dirt path on Joe's land that goes through the farm? Well, it's a bike path, you know? And how do I map that? And how do I draw these distances? And I choose bike path, just as an example, because there are a lot of other examples in there. With schools, some of the definite... Some of the schools aren't defined as a... I forget one of the ones. It wasn't a finishing school. It was... There was a term that was used that I really wasn't even familiar with what that was.
Continuation schools.
Continuation.
Special education schools.
What is a continuation? I don't know what a continuation school is.
Junior colleges, colleges, and universities.
You know, not to belabor the point, but we can't even do a map.
Right.
It would be, in some respects, difficult to do a map based on the current distances to the things that are defined in the reg in some respects, you know? Daycares. There's... I think there's 45 or 50 daycares in the town.
We were going to do a map of those, but we just...
We'd have to go to the state. We'd have to get the list from the state, whose license is not, whatever. We'd have to plot them all out and then draw those distances.
So when you... If I can, when you get the regulation back, if you guys already have it at home, you have to read the definition for the purpose of this section. Because I don't think we paid a lot of attention to that. And we did this because I think Commissioner DeGruy brought up a very good point. And there was some compromise here, and we all, you know, we're happy with what we did. But when you read through C, for the purpose of this section, what all these definitions mean, you see what all the exclusion's on, I mean, forget it. I mean, it's like Matt...
Well, yeah. It seemed like we were just adding them on.
Yeah.
As the public was speaking, it was just, oh, well, can we add this?
Right. And the second part of this is that, and I think this is something that we should look at, whenever you're doing regulations, try to keep in mind the private sector part and the market part of how things happen. So cannabis is obviously unique, but the reality is that, you know, there's a business model too, and there's motivations and incentives and disincentives. So just because you zone it and you write a reg and you adopt it, doesn't necessarily mean that things are going to go and be and work out the way because you wrote it that way. They're going to do what they're financing in the economy. You know, it may cost $20 million to do a grow facility. So there's some economics associated with that. The distribution, the retail, all of the other different pieces. And so whenever you write a reg, try to keep that in mind.
So is there consensus to have staff schedule a public hearing?
Thank you very much.
Okay. And do we need a vote on it, or is it just a consensus?
No. No, I'm good.
Okay. Move on to correspondence. Is there any correspondence?
Good.
I don't think so.
No? Commissioner Correspondent?
I don't have anything.
Commissioner Correspondent, or I should say, are there any commissioner comments or anything you want to bring up at this point, for any commissioners? No? Director of Planning Report?
I received the draft POCD. It was unedited. We should... I believe that Don has every intention of having it to you for the next meeting. Backing out of the requirements of 65-day lead time for the public hearing to get it out to OPM and council and things like that, we're looking probably at a date for a public Backing out of the requirements of 65-day lead time for the public hearing to get it out to O P M, and council, and things like that, we're looking probably at a date for a public hearing of December 15th, because it's a 65-day lead time for their review.
I mean, that really, I'm on TV, so I'm not going to use the word I'm thinking, I want to use. That really, really pushes it out.
So, basically, we need to finish, you know, have a final draft by, like, what was it, my date? Like, October 9th.
So, he's not going to have the final draft ready for September 22nd?
Oh, no, 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 no.
So, he's not going to have the final draft ready for September 22nd?
Oh, no, 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 I said, so, so, I'm, we, he's going to have the final draft for us before, you know, by the 22nd.
Okay.
It's just that, what I was saying is that statutory timelines for submittal to O P M, and getting it to Town Council-
Yeah.
-and, and all the different things that we've got to do, is 65 days before the public hearing, so I went, started kind of calculating that, so I'm anticipating a, a public hearing date of December 15th.
Okay, but in the meantime-
We have to get it to council way before then.
We do, yeah, so we, so we pursue it, all that we can do, our-
We're looking probably at, like, an October 9th deadline for getting it out.
Well, I think, I'm, I'm logistically thinking, we're going to get it on September 22nd, we're going to have some questions, and this board's probably going to want some changes to that P O C D.
Right, so-
I'm being quite honest with you, I'm, I'm looking around here, I know there's going to be, so we're not, we're not going to take this and just automatically be blessing this.
And we have, and we have our P O C D committee on the 21st.
Yeah, well-
So, we're definitely going to have it by the next meeting.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, I'm just talking with you here in front of the, knowing some of my commissioners, so we get that, what I would call the draft, because we haven't approved it yet-
Yep.
-on the 22nd. Well, I can assure you that every single one of these commissioners is going to go home and read that, and there's going to want to be changes, and we're going to discuss that. So, we're not going to be anywhere near condition to pass it. When did you think we were going to pass a P O C D with our approval to the council? What was your target date for that?
Well, council, I-
I guess is my question.
I did not, I, I have a whole little spreadsheet as to timelines, but I unfortunately did not bring that.
It's okay.
So, basically, yeah, that's a good point, so the 20, if we have it the 22nd, then we could have conversations on it the 22nd as well, but also the 13th, which is actually after the deadline, so we're probably going to have to have a, a special meeting in December then, hopefully.
Yeah, and, and that's what I'm just talking, I know it's getting late, but, so we can set up the future going forward, do you think it is cognizant of us, or in our best interest, to have ourselves, commissioners, a special meeting here in early October, just dedicated to the P O C D?
Or even, or even late September even, yeah.
Yeah, so we can, that's it, that's the only thing on the agenda, special meeting, P O C D, so we can start to, so we can not lose too much time, I guess, is the point.
I think that would be good.
Yeah, so if we can get it on the 22nd, are people kind of agreeable to maybe having a special meeting in a week after that?
Hold on.
Like, what, what dates are we talking?
Well, I don't know, depending on what Lori could get.
First, first week of October.
Oh, yeah, we'll get it, get it.
No, no, last week of September.
Last week of September.
29th, 28th.
Yeah, 28, 29th, 29th.
Good restaurant, Laurie.
Yeah.
So, Lori, why don't we plan on that, at least right now, thinking about, we're going to, if we get it on a 20, if we get it from Don on the 22nd, if we get it from Don on the 22nd-
No, you're going to have it before then.
Okay.
I'm just saying that you'll have it by then.
So, then, let's plan-
I'm hoping you're going to have it this week even.
Okay, so let's plan on doing a-
If not, early next week.
Let's plan on doing, I'm looking for consent-
Have to be after the 29th.
Was that, that 29th, oh, you're, you're gone?
Yeah.
Could you read it and get back your comments to us on email?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, okay, because I don't want, you know, no offense, I just don't want to lose a lot of time, we're, we're, we don't want to lose a lot of time.
Yeah.
So, why don't we think about setting up a special meeting sometime during that last week of September, just for the P O C D discussion?
Do you prefer Wednesday or Thursday?
We're used to Thursdays.
Can we do it, like, downstairs?
Yeah, I was going to say, skid a corner.
And we'll get some food or something?
Yeah. You paying? We don't have any budget for that.
Sure, I'll spray. Pasta.
So, is this, does this sound agreeable to everybody? We'll have a special meeting, we, you know, whatever, it's the 29th, or whatever that is, we'll let Lori and Matt figure it out where the room is, and, for, just for P O C discussions, so we can keep the ball moving on that. Ken, you know, if you, if you're not back, you can, you know, at least get back to us email, or maybe we even, you can, maybe you can even do a Zoom into that one too, possibly.
I may be back by then.
Good restaurant.
Yeah, no, it's, it's got to be a public meeting.
We'll, we'll see if we can get something catered, I guess, I don't know, I really don't have a budget for that, but we'll see what I can do.
No, I'm, I can't, if, if it was after the November election, I could say, well, maybe I could transfer you some money out of my budget, but, it's not after November yet, so I can't make that offer yet.
So, yeah, so I, I hadn't had a chance to talk to Don about that, so, but you should have a copy, he, he just wanted to get it to you after it was edited-
Okay.
-so you didn't focus on typos and things.
Okay.
So.
Anything else on Director of Planning Report?
P O C D, oh, our zoning enforcement technician, Nicole Maruka, had, has resigned and has left the employ of the town of Enfield, but we have hired Jennifer McKenzie as our Secretary Three, and so she's starting to run the department already after, like, a week, which is great, so, so, it's, at least, she, you know, she's fitting in quite well. We spent a lot of August cleaning out the office, and if you come on in, you'll see the difference.
Yeah.
There's a lot of paper that is not there anymore.
Now, you're keeping Greg hopping down to the dumpster-
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, to the shredder box, yeah.
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, you, you kept your, what I call rec, your deposition, you haven't lost the position?
No, we're not, and we're not going to fill it until we just, you know, figure out if there's a hole that, that can be filled.
So, you're going to wait a little bit on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let, let Jennifer, you know, get used to things, and, and we're all starting to kind of reorganize, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any applications to be received that you need to report to us tonight?
Yep, public hearing, excuse me, public hearing 3047 at 18 Mullen Road, which is a storage facility, outdoor storage facility, SPR 1900, which is 35 Enfield Street Smoke Shop. Actually, we were having a conversation about that today, that, that might just need to be a zoning permit, but we'll make a determination on that. And then, we have SPR 1900, which is Seven Hazard Avenue, it's a drive-up ATM.
Yeah.
So, we were thinking that it was just a modification of something that was previously approved, but I was looking, and it appears that the ATM that was approved there was[1745.23]